I'd like to call to order the... There we are, up on the video. 6:30. I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Planning Commission's regular meeting of December 4th, 2023. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the "Raise Hand" button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is opened. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time, for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, are we still showing a slide? No, this is a little bit out of date. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Leonard.
Here.
Commissioner Pete.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, now here's the place where we would call for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to vote on... Well, I have a proposal. Sometimes this commission has done the Pledge of Allegiance, sometimes it doesn't. We've already taken an oath of office to uphold the Constitution and our allegiance is not in question. This isn't grade school and, you know, I don't know that we have any...
But it's the United States of America and I'm gonna talk to the flag, dude.
Period. Period. Period.
That is not even worth talking about, correct?
You need to be recognized by the chair.
My proposal is that we make it optional, that when we have a small gathering, we might say, "We don't necessarily need to do it." When we have a big group of people, we might say, "Hey, let's do the pledge tonight." So, let's have a quick vote on that. I hear one vote yes. Skylar?
I'm in favor of saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, we've got two votes. Drew?
Yes.
Okay, we're saying the pledge tonight, we have a majority. So, Don Schmitz, would you like to lead us?
With pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 4A continued to a date uncertain.
Do I have a second for that motion?
If I may, Chair?
Yes.
After speaking was the applicant for item 5A, which is 31535.5 Pacific Coast Highway. They would like to request a continuance to January 16th, 2024, to address a view issue raised by a neighbor to the project and confirmed in a site inspection this afternoon.
So moved.
Can I... I was gonna second that and agree to that. But I just wanted to make sure, I felt like there was something else that we pushed to the 16th and make sure that we have space on that meeting to do that.
Good point.
We do have room on the 16th for the items that are currently scheduled for that meeting.
And adding this item is not gonna mess that up?
We should be okay for the 16th and we don't want to add anything beyond that. That meeting, anything else that needed to be continued should move to February.
As a continued item, it'll be under number four in the agenda?
It'll be, yes, but that particular meeting, most of the agenda will be under four.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll second continuing item 4A and continuing item 5A to January 16th.
Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so done. And now, may I have an approval of the agenda, please? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 22nd, 2023. The amended agenda for the meeting was properly posted on November 29th, 2023.
Okay, thank you. We have no ceremonial presentations, at least that I'm aware of. So we'll move on to item 2A, communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda but for which the Planning Commission has subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have any no-speaker slips? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
One raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Joe Drummond on Zoom, are you there, Joe? Can we hear you?
Hi, yes, Laurie, I'm not there in person, I'm in Canada. My father-in-law passed away, my husband's lost both his parents in eight months, so... But I've obviously missed that Chair Mazza or Vice Chair Mazza was not voted in as chair from the three pro-development contractors that I side with, Ann Revell and FPPC, that they shouldn't be there and they are jeopardizing the Planning Commission. And I am glad that you all did approve the skate park, at least. So, thanks, that's all I had to say.
Alright, thank you, Joe. No other raised hands on the Zoom?
No, those are all the hands.
Okay, so that means we're on to item 2B, Planning Commission and Staff Comments and Inquiries. Who'd like to go first?
I will.
Dennis?
So, yet another grandchild, but we had her today. Camila Capri-Smith was born this morning, seven pounds, seven ounces, down in San Diego. And thank you all, and we're just thrilled, I can't wait to meet her this weekend. And she, of course, is adorable, she couldn't be anything else but. And happy to have her into the world and the Smith family. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dennis, and yours. Skylar?
No comments at this time.
Drew?
No comments, let's keep it going.
John?
Was this the son that just had the birthday?
Yeah, so, thank you, Vice Chair. It was on the first. And he had a big party at the Boomers down in Irvine, so I went down and spent all day there because they have cars you can drive and batting cages, so I was in.
Okay, so do they have the same birthday?
Oh, no, but my daughter Jamie was scared to death that was gonna happen because Drew's came on the 24th, so that was on her mind, trust me.
Okay, I have a very short comment and that is, I found it extremely hard to be up to date on a Planning Commission meeting four days after the last Planning Commission, so I hope we don't do that again. It's not fair to the applicants. Anyway, that's it.
Alright, thanks, John. Just a couple of comments. One, the City Council, this is really just news, the City Council is hearing ADU ordinance. And they continued it from their last meeting to their next meeting, in part because they want more public feedback, more input. And so I would just urge you all to, anybody watching this, if you're interested in an ADU, you'll want to have something to say. If you're interested in your neighborhood not having more ADUs and traffic and whatnot, you might want to say something too. My time's up already? So, they're talking about ADUs next week, let's show up if you have something to say about it. And then, secondly, just a word about the process here as we start a new term. In contrast with some past chairs, I think there's value in having a lively dialogue between the Commissioners, subject to a few considerations. The back and forth is good, but let's keep it one at a time so the video record doesn't get confused, so don't interrupt each other and have some faith that I will make sure everybody's position is represented. Also, the more complex the hearing, the more participants, the tighter we need to run the ship. If there are a lot of speakers, etc., we need to lock it down a little more. And meanwhile, this may be just a reminder for some and might be helpful for you, Drew, and being new, just to go over, at least this is how I see it, the types of questions we deal with generally can be organized into a certain flow. First, after the staff report, we have an opportunity for technical clarifications, if need be. And good at that point are any questions that might help the ensuing public comment to keep that informed and on track. Then after the comment, when the matter comes back up to us for deliberation, I think of three phases. The threshold questions, the things we need to sort out and talk about before anything else. And then the main issues, kind of the body of the stuff we're talking about. And then, you know, if we're gonna decide if the project is gonna fly. And then finally, if it looks like it is gonna fly, it is gonna get a yes vote, then we move on to the conditions and any modifications that we think it might need. So, just to have some shape of the order of things. And with that, let's move on to the consent... Oh, Richard, I'm sorry, yeah?
No problem, Chair, appreciate that. If we could have, try this again, we tried to share with you these slides at our last meeting. I want to get them out there for the public. This may not happen, we'll see. So just quickly to reiterate that on December 22nd, as approved by the City Council, we will... Oh, this was what we were gonna show last time, the PowerPoint. No need to add this recital. That was the recital we wanted to show you at the last meeting that we were gonna add to the items because of the cancellation. We're playing catch-up tonight, here we go. So, December 22nd to January 1st, we'll close City Hall. So while City Hall will not be open to the public and most city staff not in the building, there will be some city staff still working. So, the code enforcement and building inspectors will be in City Hall and in the field. That will still be taking place. The contract staff for the city will still be working. They may not be in the building here, but either remote or in the buildings of their respective employers. So this would include our fire rebuild contract planner, Akash Shah, he'll still be working. The contract city reviewers, like the city biologists, the geotecs, the coastal engineer and environmental health, they will still be working as well. So you may get emails from them or if the public has questions, always welcome to email. If I may have the next slide, please? Once again, most city staff will not be here. For example, the planners, they will be on break, except for the contract planners. The building safety and planning submittal portals will both be closed during that time, as well as the public counters for both, for all three, planning, environmental services, ESD, and also public works. There will be no processing of payments. And also, no one will be checking the general building and safety hotlines or planning hotlines. As I mentioned, code enforcement calls, those go to a unique voicemail, as well as building inspections, that those services will be taking place. And is there another slide, Rebecca? I forget. One more, there we go. So, we have just up here as a reminder that no construction on city holidays, so that's Christmas and New Year's. And then also, we'll be reiterating this information through the city's website. We'll mention it at both Planning Commission and City Council meetings. And also it'll be on social media posts, as well as we're preparing a notification to send to owners and applicants of active projects. So to get the word out there that we will be closed, since this is something new that the council approved. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Richard. Question from Commissioner Mazza?
Will the staff report for the, I guess it's the 18th, will it have instructions on how to appeal? Because to me, last time, it seemed like we weren't following calendar days and business days and all this kind of stuff. So, can you put something out so people know?
Yes, we can do something a bit more detail. We are looking at a way to make up, if you will, for the time that City Hall is closed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? No? Okay, so we're on to the consent calendar, item 3. Do any Commissioners wish to pull the one item we have on the consent calendar?
I do.
Okay, John wants to pull it. Secretary Evans, do you have any speakers on that item? Okay, and any Zoom speakers?
There's one hand from Joe Drummond.
Okay, Joe, go ahead, please.
Hi. So in addition to the new outs with almost 40% demolition of exterior walls proposed, the demolition plans were reviewed by the city's building safety plan consultant to verify this project complies with the city's remodel policy. The proposed project represents the total demolition of exterior walls to date, the proposed exterior demolition of which 60% will remain, the existing to remove is exactly 39.85%. The staff report states that the proposed development has been analyzed with the hazards listed in LIP's Chapter 9 by the Planning Department, City Biologist, City Environmental Health Administrator, City Geotechnical Consultant Reviewers, WD-29, and the Los Angeles County Fire Department. The required findings are made as follows. Finding 1, the project as proposed will neither be subject to nor increase instability of the site or structural integrity from geologic flood or fire hazards due to project design, location on the site, or other reasons. The applicant submitted geotechnical and soils engineering reports prepared by CalWest Geotechnical Consulting Engineers by Land Phases Inc. The reports evaluate site-specific conditions and recommendations are provided to address any pertinent issues. The reports reviewed by city geotechnical consultant reviewers find that the proposed project will be safe against hazard from landslide, etc., and the proposed project will not adversely influence the stability of the subject site or immediate vicinity provided the geotechnical recommendations are incorporated into the project plans and implemented during construction. This project was applied for only a little over a year ago and is an administrative CDP. This is for a 40% demolition and remodel plus extension of two decks, 30% larger than my current project, plus the decks are attached to the existing structure. I would like to remind the planning director and the commission that my smaller 64-square-foot deck has been in planning for almost three years for a much smaller-scale project that started off as a simple over-the-counter project and now an APR being applied for the small deck. This deck had to undergo both geotechnical and engineering, which was extremely cost prohibitive, and now three geotechnical reviews. While this much larger project did not have to go through any geotechnical review despite having provided a soils engineering report, I could not find any geotechnical review for these submitted reports anywhere on vice, except for the outs, which Fletcher also sent me tonight. My project qualifies for an LIP exemption pursuant to LIP Section 13.4.1. Since an exemption to the CDP requirement would be issued, LIP Section 9.4D would not apply, so geological factor of safety issue in Big Rock does not apply. So essentially, I personally have done at least twice the studies in this particular project, which is a much larger and not just as simple APR as mine is. I'm highlighting this in the hopes that all projects, especially small projects, are treated fairly, more quickly, and less cost prohibitive now and in the future. And I do hope that my project can finally be approved this week, or at least before the planning department closure, as I've submitted all requirements a long time ago, especially if this project is approved tonight. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Joe. Any other speakers, Parker?
No, those are all the raised hands.
That's all the raised hands?
Take all comment, maybe go to the applicant prior to closing the public hearing in case they want to say anything in response to that?
Yeah, sure. Well, as part of the public hearing, the applicant can respond to what they just heard. Are they here? Do you want to say anything at this time or you just want to answer any questions if need be?
I can answer any questions if need be.
Okay, alright, so we'll do that. So, John, you pulled the item. Do you want to, we'll bring it back, close the public hearing nominally and bring it back up to the table?
Sure. I sent an email to Fletcher with four, five questions and I did not get a reply. So, I'm gonna go through them because I think there's some faults in this staff report. Number one, they, and we can answer these one at a time, but in looking at the project, it says it needs eight feet of rise to 11, I mean, it needs to be eight feet and the rise of the roof makes it 11 feet 6 inches. Well, that gives a flat roof, 3.3 feet 8 inches. And that's quite a thick, flat roof. I'm wondering why this increase in height is needed? Because under the, the way I calculated, it's only 1.6 feet is needed, which is within the parameter of what it is right now. Fletcher?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hey, John, yeah, so I think the email was sent a couple hours ago, I may not have seen it yet, but...
Yeah, I went through them, okay.
So, yeah, to answer that, the design of the carport roof, they're just keeping the same design, they're just lifting it about a foot and a half, I think, to get that minimum eight-foot clearance below. So they're just keeping the same architectural design, so...
Okay, well, part of that is, was that counted in the demolition calculation?
Yeah, so the demo plans, I believe the portions, they're actually keeping the top plate of where it connects to the northern side of the carport and where it attaches to the house. They're keeping... All right, so we'll do that. So, John, you pulled the item. Do you want to, we'll bring it back, close the public hearing nominally, and bring it back up to the table?
Sure. I sent an email to Fletcher with four, five questions, and I did not get a reply. So I'm going to go through them, because I think there's some faults in this staff report. Number one, they, and we can answer these one at a time, but in looking at the project, it says it needs, it needs eight feet of rise to 11, I mean, needs to be eight feet, and the rise of the roof makes it 11 feet 6 inches. Well, that gives a flat roof 3.3 feet 8 inches. And that's quite a thick, flat roof. I'm wondering why this increase in height is needed? Because under the, under, the way I calculated, it's only 1.6 feet is needed, which is within the, within the parameter of what it is right now.
Fletcher?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hey, John. Yeah, sorry, I think the email was sent a couple hours ago. I may not have seen it yet, but...
Yeah, I went through them. Okay.
So, yeah, to answer that, the design of the carport roof, they're just keeping the same design. They're just lifting it about a foot and a half, I think, to get that minimum eight-foot clearance below. So they're just keeping the same architectural design.
Okay. Well, part of that is, was that counted in the demolition calculation?
Yeah, so the demo plans, I believe the portions, they're actually keeping the top plate of where it connects to this, let's see, the northern side of the carport and where it attaches to the house. They're keeping that. The segments that are perpendicular to those are counted towards the demolition, so.
Okay. The second question is, the assessor gives the house 2868 square feet, and we say 3294. Well, I assume that's where we just give everybody 400-something square feet for a garage, that the assessor doesn't count. But in this case, there is no garage. So the assessor's number should be the same as ours. I'm wondering why we're giving him 3294 square feet?
Oh, yeah, so the residence was actually built in the 70s when a two-stall garage was required. So we're actually, that's part of the project, was that this carport is being enclosed and restored to a garage. That square footage was counted from the beginning. And that amount, if you add to the tax assessor number, is still low. And so, and that caught my attention early on. And so, you know, I looked at the 1996 approval, which included a kitchen remodel, and those plans had the same building footprint as the proposed plans. And based on my site visits, I mean, there have been no record of any unpermitted additions since then, so.
Well, my question is, how do you go, carports aren't counted? And so how do we count it?
It was originally a garage, so that square footage would have been counted from the beginning.
And they made a garage a carport?
Correct.
And it is now a carport? Because when you look at what photos I can see of it, it looked like a garage to me. It has at least three walls and a door. So I don't know how that can be considered a carport.
It doesn't have, it's sort of a drive-through structure. It has a solid front, which is a little storage area, if you see on the cycle.
Well, how do you get into it? Because the garage comes in from the front, and that driveway comes in from the front.
It's, no, it's a semicircular driveway.
Semi-circular, and then it's at the garage.
So it travels through the carport.
Not from my aerial views, but so you're saying that...
So it's like a big portico kind of thing?
Essentially, yeah. Yeah. And it's a little low, which is why they wanted to raise the roof.
So you're saying they took a garage, converted it to a carport, and now they want to convert it back to a garage? And the garage would have been counted in the original square footage?
The garage would be counted, but the tax assessor does not count that area historically. So you'll see a low number there from the tax assessor.
So why would not that demolition of those three walls count in the demolition calculation? It's serial. It's not each time you demolish. It's the total amount you demolish.
So two of the, essentially four sides of the square are counted towards demolition?
They're in there, they're marked in red?
Yeah, we could show the, do we have the demo plan here? Sure.
Okay, John, I think this is the applicant, right?
Yeah, hi, I'm Courtney Davidson. So the current owner bought the house in 2020, when it was an existing carport, so no work has been done to that. So basically, it's a big U. So you drive in, and it's, there's an opening, no door, and you can drive all the way through. So as the applicant who, or the owner, there's never been a garage. So what I've had to do with Fletcher is, basically, he found the record saying that it used to be a garage, so part of our application is to convert it back to a garage. Currently, the head height, I think, in there is roughly seven feet, maybe, if that. And it's kind of sloped, so what we want to do is raise it, so we can actually fit a couple cars in there. And so we're raising it up to eight feet, then you'll have the framing and the parapet on the outside, so we're not changing any of the look of it. We're just going to add some doors to it. So right now, there's no doors. It's a U shape right now, and you just literally drive all the way through it.
Okay, so there were two questions, one about square footage and one about the demolition, cumulative demolition. John, did you get an answer?
Well, is the square footage 3294 originally? Because you say they didn't, they didn't count the garage in the beginning?
So the garage would have been, the tax assessor does not count the garage, so that's why it's quite a bit lower. But when you add that amount in, it's still a little lower than what is reported on the plans. And that, again, that caught my eye, and so I looked at prior records, and we have an approved plan from 1996.
And 96 means nothing.
And that shows the same footprint of the existing single-story residence, so.
John, are you...
Yeah, but 96 was an interior remodel. Does it show it as a garage or as a carport?
It shows it as a garage.
John, are you suggesting that the cumulative demolition would go over 50%? And did you do...
I don't know, because I couldn't quite read that thing. It wasn't real clear.
That's where you're going?
Yeah. Okay, so there's that question. I just want to know if the staff report was correct. Okay. Well, that sort of answers the demolition.
You want to let somebody else go for a minute, or?
Well, no, I just got to read these, and this changes it. So why would not, well, okay, you're saying that the TDS is correct at 3294, even though it wasn't a carport when it started? It was a carport when this project started. So there's no change in the TDSF, okay? And the last question would be, since there's no change in the footprint of the building or the fixture count, did the septic tank fail? Because it never says in here that it has.
Yeah, so the history behind that is, this, this application was originally two applications. It was a remodel. And then after we had that application, and the owner learned that they had a failing septic system, so they submitted a different septic application, and then we asked them to merge the two into one application you have before you now.
So on purchase, the septic system failed. On purchase, okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 3B1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I still have some questions. These are probably fairly administrative, but...
It wouldn't be, it would be receive and accept instead of approve.
Right, but regardless, I think Joe was right, that the geology review only looked at the OWTS, so. Does that, that suggest that the expansions have no consequential interaction with the geology, and if so, would we not want to have that in writing?
The geology review sheet that I shared with Joe earlier today was from early March of this year, I believe, and that is essentially the consolidated approval from geology for what we used to have two applications, like I mentioned before, incorporated the remodel into the septic application. So that review was updated in early March, and so that's what we're going with.
So I haven't seen what you've shown, Joe, but you're saying that there is a geology review sheet that does address the rest? Okay, I didn't see that. How does moving the deck, expanding the deck two and a half feet closer to the property line not alter the side yard setback? It's hard to say it's not structure, because it's elevated and creates visual mass overhanging the lot below. Your position is that the deck, the expanded deck footprint is not structure?
Yeah, these are, you know, these are projections, so these were evaluated as projections into yards, and really only it came down to one little corner of the deck that projected into the side yard setback, which it's allowed to do. And I think it only projected a few inches.
Yeah, I think we had a stairway on sea level that did something similar. The setback table states that one of the, I think it was the south one is 155 feet. It's not that. It might be 15 feet. It's that. It's the rear yard. I'm assuming that was just a typo, and that didn't affect any calculations. Is that right?
Are you referring to the 155-foot proposed rear yard setback?
Yeah. Page 4 of 19 in the staff report. I think it's a typo, but maybe I'm just not, maybe I'm misunderstanding something. I just want to clarify that.
That has to be a typo.
Okay.
That should be corrected.
It should be corrected, yeah. And then I was confused about the, the report says, the conformance table says a 24-foot flat roof is allowed here. Is that because there was a previous site plan review, or because this is in an overlay? Why are we allowing 24?
Yeah, yeah, it looks like, yeah, sorry, that rear yard setback should be 15 feet. So that is a typo. And, yeah, the, this, this project is in the Malibu Knowles Overlay District, so.
That's why, okay. Okay, that addresses, oh, final question. At page 8, PDF 10, it says that the, extending the decks out does not increase the structure's fire susceptibility. How does it not if we're extending decks out into space? Doesn't that create a more fire hazard? And maybe I would ask Richard, is that something that we ever look at in terms of fire susceptibility, is the word here? Overhanging decks? My understanding is that that's not something we like to do, because fire gets up under decks easily.
The fire department did look at the project. Oops, am I reading this one? Let me try to correct these two. We do send projects to fire for their review, and when we talk about susceptibility, it's more general. This is only a few-foot addition to the, to the deck. And in terms of fire or embers getting under the deck, the applicant will have to demonstrate compliance with all the building codes and plan check as well.
Okay. All right, in that case, that satisfies, I said they'd be sort of administrative, but...
Well, can I ask a question?
One more from John?
If we have errors, can we correct them, or do we just have to receive and file the way it is?
Correct, so that's where I was going to speak to Mr. Vice Chair. Chair, there is no need for a motion here. However, I believe it would be fine for you all to receive and file with direction to Director Malika and city staff to correct the error noted on it, and that would be sufficient.
Okay, so ordered then, right?
Perfect.
I think, we do accept it, right? Consensus?
Right.
Yeah, good, okay. Just reading people's minds here. All right, so we're on then to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Davidson. This will be, get my paperwork straight here.
5B, Chair.
5B. This is a Coastal Development Permit Amendment, number 22-008, an application to amend Coastal Development Permit number 16028, to allow for the construction of a 999-square-foot basement addition to a previously-approved 5,984-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence located at 6333 Seastar Drive. Let's take disclosures first. Joey, any? Dennis?
Spoke to Susan Valane this morning. Didn't learn anything. I didn't know from the report, from the staff report.
Okay, Skylar?
None.
Drew?
None.
None for me, John? Okay, may we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Hill and Commissioners. The next item previously described is for Coastal Development Permit Amendment. This Coastal Development Permit Amendment is for the construction of a 999-square-foot basement addition and expanded OWTS system to a previously-approved 5,984-square-foot single-family residence that was approved by this body via Resolution 2232 on August 1st, 2022, after concerns were addressed regarding the possible construction of a roof deck, which was subsequently removed from the final plans. The applicant formally submitted an amendment for this permit on December 27th, 2022, to the planning department, and was subsequently reviewed and deemed complete on October 11th of 2023. The subject property is a 47,138-square-foot vacant lot located in the Seastar Estates, a residential gated community at the northwest side of Morningview Drive, from which the area comprises a mix of vacant parcels and others developed with one- and two-story single-family residences. The proposed project, as previously described, adheres to the LIP's definition of a basement, while also conforming to the residential development standards from Section 3.6 of the LIP. Now, the proposed 999-square-foot basement does not add any additional TDSF and is 10 feet in height, which is staying in compliance with the LCP, whilst fully minimizing any visual impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and maintaining the original TDSF under the previously-approved CDP. So, in summary and in conformance with the LIP, the proposed project offers no adjustments to building footprint, to TDSF, impermeable lot coverage, or non-exempt grading quantities. The original LIP findings thus discussed during the August 1st, 2022 commission meeting are still applicable and have not changed for the proposed amendment. This project for a basement addition to the previously-approved single-family residence is recommended for approval by department staff through this Resolution 2355, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. De Silva. Do we want to open public comment on this? We want to hear from the applicant first? Do we have an applicant? No? John, you have a technical question for staff?
Yep.
Okay.
I believe Susan Valane has her hand raised in the meeting. Oh, is that 5C?
Yeah, there's two raised hands. There's Terry and Susan Valane, but I'm not sure if they're...
I don't know who Terry is. Let's consider Terry, let's...
Susan is the applicant.
Yeah. Let's hear from Susan now, and just hear, if we need to hear from you. Susan, are you there?
Hi, Chair Hill.
Hi.
Good evening. Hi, I just want to let you know I'm here to answer any questions, and the architect is actually here as well with me if you have any questions with regards to this addition to the basement of this single-family home. And just to sort of reiterate what Mr. De Silva said, there is no increase in height whatsoever to the original approval of the CDP.
Okay, thank you, Susan. You've got 14 and a half minutes before rebuttal, if you need it. So we've got a public speaker also on Zoom?
Yeah, there's one raised hand from Terry.
Terry? Can we hear you, Terry?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. Hi, so my name is Terry Wenders. I'm calling from Southern California Land use. We're the representative of 6325 Seastar, which is the property to the northeast. Originally, we approved, or gave support for this project, and continuing to give support for this project, don't see any challenges with the current design, but we did want to highlight that while the revision does not propose a roof deck, we would like to have that documented as a condition of the approval. We did recommend that last time out during the previous approval, but it wasn't included. So we just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. Do you recall, did we deliberate on the roof deck as a condition?
It was a factor of the discussion, yes, but I, and it was deliberated, but it was not included as a condition in the end.
But you think we did not vote one way or the other? Okay. All right, well, thank you for that. We'll consider that. No more members of the public? And we'll close the public discussion then?
You want to go with the...
Rebuttal.
Yep.
Oh, good, Susan?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah. What do you think about that, a condition that if we, this is your rebuttal? You heard?
Right, I believe, and I'm sorry that I don't remember, because it's been a year, but I thought it was a condition of approval that was added to the resolution when we, last time.
I agree.
So, if, if not, I don't, the, the owner, Mr. Troy Isaac, did agree to having that as a condition as part of the resolution, which we thought was added, but if you'd like to add it this time, we are in full agreement.
Okay, great, thank you. So, staff, if in fact it wasn't added, I think we.
We have to, we have to make a, we, I'm going to make a motion to approve the project with an addition to a condition that no roof deck be allowed on this property, or whatever language the staff wants to use that says that.
All seconds.
We have a second from Commissioner Peak, any other discussion? I have a, a question or a discussion, if we, if we, can we look at a, a graphic of the, the basement, a plan view? Yeah, let's see, that would be, for example, page. I was going to say A3A, but that, that works fine, yeah, that works better, actually. The hatched area in between sort of the pool room where the pool table is and the family room on the right side is marked as fill or something similar, I'm not reading it from here, but to me, it looks like a bootleg bedroom in terms of the shape and the size, and I don't necessarily understand the necessity for it, go back to the same view, please?
Craig, sorry to interrupt you, but I think the reason why they have to do that is because they only get 1,000 square feet, and if they go over that, it would count at 50% against their TDSF.
Exactly.
And.
Exactly.
I just have trouble coming to how it's being engineered like you.
Okay, so here's, here's, here's what I'm getting at. I think, I think, if I'm correct, and Susan, maybe you can help me on this, I think the reason that's there is because you want to have the situation of the stairway and the lightwell escape shaft where they are, because they, they need to correspond with the floor above in a certain place, and that spreads out the length of your basement so that they could, that those two things can be where they need to be, but what I'm seeing is that you, that could still be the case with a somewhat narrower basement that could still be, it could be narrower and still 999 square feet without having to have a bootleg room in it. Does that, Susan, does that make sense to you? What, why is that kind of phantom room need to be there? Can we open her microphone?
This is Jonathan, the architect, can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, good, thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. To respond to that question, we have a patio space that's an outdoor courtyard above, so that's why there's this void space down below in the basement that's just going to be, you know, either existing dirt or fill. There's no way that that could ever become a room because there'll be structural concrete walls and things that will enclose that area. So, I hope that answers the question.
If, if, can you pull up A3A real quick? So, if you, if you see that area where there's a couple circles, it says, uh, open air patio, so I, I don't know how they'd possibly be doing that, and I, I don't think there's any merit that they would be re-excavating that and making that a basement, I think that that would be so cost, so cost-effective of doing anything like that.
Yeah, it's not daylighting, it's going to be full of dirt, and it'd just be a nightmare to take it out one pocket at a time like, you know, in the movies, so it would be, it'd be tough to do, they're not going to do anything with it.
Okay, all right, I, I'll just call it, I just wondered if anybody wanted to bite on it, John?
Well, I, I would, I would make sure we have a condition for that space that it may never be occupied.
I don't understand the reason for the condition, it's marked as fill on the plan, and that's what we're approving.
Because it's very hard to go inside of a house and find a violation.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not in favor of that condition, I'm absolutely willing to approve the project.
So, you don't, you don't say it could be occupied.
I'm not saying it can be occupied, I'm saying that what we're approving is what's in front of us, and if there's any changes to that, that's not what we approved. It doesn't matter whether you put that condition on there or not. That's just what it is.
We do it all the time, we say this room may not be occupied, if you don't want to make it easier for.
But that, that's different, that's when you're building a room, this is not building a room, this is building walls of a foundation that has a patio on top of it, is completely different than what you're talking about.
To, to my mind, the fact that there's a patio on top of it is not relevant, it could be anything on top of it and still be.
Well, no.
I, I don't understand why that would be different.
A patio on top is a big deal because you could walk in, as Dennis knows, with a backhoe and dig it right out.
But you can't, the way that this thing's built, it's got four sides, they're all structural, there's no daylighting, it's, you're, you're not going to be able to get to it, it's not going to.
You couldn't make that patio into a swimming pool.
Well, anybody can do anything, but, but it's below grade, so I guess if you end up daylighting and the neighborhood watches you take all this thing apart, somebody's going to call, that'll be the end of that, nobody's going to do anything.
I'm, I would, I'm, I'm seconding the motion to, to approve it the way it is with the condition for the, not having a roof deck on there, and I'd like to see a roll call.
I'm not since, I'm not sensing enough momentum to challenge that in any way, so my, my other question would be, the escape lightwell, I was under the impression, maybe I'm wrong, that that needs to egress to the exterior of the building? I guess not, right? That's okay? For the basement, you could. In the past, when we've had those, the, that secondary egress, emergency egress, it goes to the exterior of the building, this one does not.
Can I ask a question of, Richard, just in, or, just in general, with a basement, if we could just get some clarification on as far as what's required from building and safety? Are there two means to get out of that, and one that has to go outside and one that can come into the house, or are you fine with one?
My understanding is that building and safety will look for two, and perhaps Jonathan could better explain, but what my understanding was that the second means of egress here goes to the outdoor patio up, if I'm reading the plans correctly, above the area that was just being discussed, so it, it's a crawl or a ladder type system it looks like?
It's a ladder type system to an opening window.
Right, above it.
Got it.
So, it gives you a second means of egress.
Right, but that, that patio is completely enclosed, right? There is no further egress beyond the house, right?
Except for where the access is, except for where that window is.
Can we, can we, can somebody point it out?
If you zoom in, you see the small blue area?
Yeah.
That's above there, there's a small little rectangle there, directly to the right of that, there's a white rectangle, that's where, that's where it is.
The white, so the egress comes up from the basement to the patio, but the patio is completely, is basically enclosed by the retaining wall, right? So, if you had to escape the building.
Well, you would just be escaping the basement, and then you'd have to go into the house to get out of that area.
So, that's my, that's my question.
Or, that ladder, there could be a ladder that goes from that?
Uh huh.
Up, and then keeps going up. I don't know the specifics of that, and it sounds like what Richard said is that building and safety will assure that that's addressed that way.
Right, this, this plan is currently within building plan check right now.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, could we, would it be appropriate to put a condition that just says that ladder continues to the outside?
I don't know if we need to put that condition, because they're going to have to mitigate it regardless, building and safety is not going to let them do it that way.
All right.
Billing and safety has passed one exit at the recommendation of staff, which had to be pulled back and redesigned because of that. Now, you need an exit, you need a way out. If you took the wall out where that square is, then people could leave the property. But you can't escape into a enclosed space. It's not escaping.
Hey, John?
We're not even clear on plan check, we're not plan checkers.
Yeah.
No, we are approving what plan check checks.
John, Skyler has a, a reading of this that suggests that that map, that that ladder does in fact continue the rest of the way up.
Can we see it?
So, if you look, and it's really hard to see on the plan up there, but if you look in your packet on A3A, which is showing the, that proposed floor plan for the floor above the basement, you'll also see that, that emergency escape ladder is indicated on there and shown.
This is those are plans?
Yeah, so it's A3A, it's, again, it's in that same little area, you can't see it on the big screen, but if you look in here, it says, right above it, there's a circle that says all A30, I can't see what the note for A30 is on here because I don't, we don't have a key, but it very clearly to me looks like that, what's, what that is indicating is that the access ladder goes up through that, that second, or what, what is the first floor from the basement, coming up that wall.
Can, uh, the architect is Jonathan, right?
Well, let me ask you this.
Hang on, John, Jonathan, can you confirm that, that that ladder continues to exterior safety?
Hi, Commissioners, this is Jonathan. Yes, it does extend up to the rear yard.
Okay.
So, you can either stop at the patio and exit the house, or continue up the next, it's like four more feet to the rear yard, and then exit through the, the drain, which is a concrete drain.
Okay, good, we've got that on record. I think we can move forward now.
One last question.
One last question.
Is the, is the escape ladder counted in the square footage?
I'm, uh, Richard, is that, do we?
Because that would take you over the 1,000 square feet if it wasn't, and they are required to be counted.
You mean the area of the lightwell?
The area of the lightwell. It's part of our code.
I can double-check the code section, but I believe we had a minimum-size lightwell that we were looking for that, I believe it doesn't get counted, it's when the lightwell extends beyond our minimum, and.
This one does, because it's not a building underneath.
Talking about a, a lightwell that's 36 inches by 36 inches.
This is a minimum size.
Three feet by three feet, it's the smallest one that they can require.
Doesn't three feet by three feet, nine square feet take you over?
Oh, boy.
Because our, our, our LIP interpretation manual specifies that you count the lightwell.
But do they, do they not have sufficient headroom on the TDSF anyway if they had to count four and a half more feet?
I thought this was 999.
This is, yeah, this is a 999.
Okay, but so there's the basement, if they have to count four and a half more feet for TDSF, well, you count half for a basement.
Well, the, the additional, the additional square footage would not take them out of compliance, it would just basically add to the TDSF, so what they're trying to do right now with the 999 square feet is not add any more additional TDSF to the originally approved CDP. So, additional TDSF would not create this, would not create a, a notion of out of compliance in any sort of way, they would just add the additional square footage to the CDP.
If we counted this, if we counted this TDSF, why doesn't it increase TDSF?
Sorry?
If we count lightbells as TDSF, which we're required to do?
Okay.
Why wouldn't it not increase the TDSF if we haven't counted it?
No, I'm saying it, it would, right? So, if, because the basements are counted for the first 1,000 square feet, right? So, if you were to add more, TDSF would be added, but that would not make this project in or out of compliance in terms of approval from this body.
Could be, but shouldn't we add that?
If, if, if we, if we do indeed count the stairwells for a TDSF, that, that would be fine, but in terms of approval from the body, it, it would not either deem this project, you know, in compliance or not in compliance.
Can, can we just add a condition, Richard, this would be a question, that just says that we approve this and that the TDSF will be measured correctly for future reference?
If the planning commission likes, we can update, we could do in the resolution, the, the square footage of the lightwell, we could add that in.
Okay, so moved, along with my prior motion to approve.
Okay, so can we just be clear on that? So, we're approving the project, we're saying that they can't do a roof deck at any time in the future, and we're asking, requesting staff to make sure that the TDSF is updated, and if the lightwell hadn't been calculated, to calculate it.
Right, and the resolution.
That it's properly accounted for.
All right.
Either way, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Massa?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we are moving on to item 5C.
That's.
Coastal development permit number 23-015, an application for a new in-ground pool and decking located at 6316 Bush Drives. Any disclosures first? Dennis?
Mr. Schmitz at the site went over where the pool and the deck are going to be. Thank you.
Oh, and we're getting a handout here from the applicant. Okay, Skyler?
Yeah, I separately met Mr. Schmitz at the site, I did walk around the site, I did walk down in the creek, and I did walk on the property up on the other side of the creek, and I just wanted to say that I noticed that unlike some of the other properties in the area, I did not see any real like critical obstructions or anything down in the creek, and I was actually quite happy to see that there.
Well, the critical meaning?
Like any gunite or any concrete junk, anything like that.
Refrigerators.
Yeah, I just, I, that was nice to see, because some of the other projects that have come forth, we've had to do different kinds of remediation, I didn't see a need for any of that with this.
All right, Drew?
I did a job walk, a site walkthrough today and met with Mr. Schmitz, and he showed me the project.
Okay, I will go next, I, I looked at the terrain on both Google Maps and 3D Google Earth, I visited the site, looked through the gate, passed the house, could see the sycamore trees and their proximity to the house, noticed the front fence is backed by dodenia about 15 feet tall, and in front of that, apparently in the public easement, we'll get clarification, close to the pavement are about 13 arbutus trees planted fairly recently it looks because they're still staked. And, uh, I guess that's it for me, John?
I just did a drive-by, I did notice the front obstruction. Other than that, Google, Google Earth was all I could do.
Okay, and so with that, may we have a staff report, please? Planner Brooks?
Yes, good evening, Chair Hill and members of the planning commission. Just to give a little bit of background for this project, in October 2021, the applicant submitted the proposed project as an APR, Administrative Plan Review, which included the assertion that the project qualifies for a CDP exemption. But because of the project's location within the map stream and wetland buffers, staff determined that the project is not exempt from the CDP requirements. Staff also provided, based on this determination, staff provided a couple of alternatives for the applicant to proceed with this application, the first of which was to convert the application to a CDP, or to request the planning director to forward this matter to the California Coastal Commission, and they would render a determination on this matter. We are here tonight because the applicant has elected to convert the application to a CDP, and, let's see, oops. Scroll. Oh, here, yeah, thank you, thank you. So, again, we are here tonight because the applicant has decided to convert the application to a CDP while maintaining the position that the project should be exempt from the CDP requirements. This assertion is because of the pool, proposed pool and decking are located in an historically disturbed area, which has been disturbed since around 1950-ish, which predates the Coastal Act. The applicant also cites LUP Policy 3.1, which states that fuel modification areas required by the county do not meet the definition of ESHA. The, this particular policy in the LUP also includes language that states that regardless of whether a stream or wetland are designated, designated as ESHA, that they still warrant the protection as ESHA. Accordingly, staff believes this particular project is subject to the ESHA development standards, which in this case requires the full provision of the 100-foot buffer and compliance with the 10,000-square-foot development area. Is it not? Okay, here we go. So, just some background about this site, the subject parcel is located on the east side of Bush Drive, and it's approximately one and a third acre in size. The site is developed with a single-story, single-family residence, again, which was originally developed in the 50s, and the site is surrounded by existing one- and two-story residential development. Included on this aerial photo is the LIP's delineation of the stream, the wetland, and ESHA. And here is a site, a, a image from Google Maps showing the existing site conditions. And this slide provides the language from the LIP, which was used as the basis for the, for determining that the project is not exempt from needing a CDP. The original introductory language, which qualifies improvements to single-family residences as exempt from needing a CDP. This exemption also applies to accessory development, which includes a pool. However, the following section includes a list of several conditions that are exceptions to this exemption rule. And the first one of which relates to any developments that are located on a beach, in a wetland, or in ESHA areas. I'd like to note that the LIP, because the LIP includes policies and standards that restrict development within wetland, stream, and ESHA areas, and they're associated with 100-foot buffers, staff includes that required buffer in the definition of a wetland area or an ESHA area. This image was provided by the applicant's biologist who identified the creek, riparian habitat, and native sycamores on the property, making this, the project subject to the ESHA development standards included in LIP Section 4.5. The project is also, must comply with the Native Tree Protection Ordinance in LIP Chapter 5. In order to determine the site, the project's consistency with the applicable ESHA development standards and the Native Tree Protection standards, staff requested that the applicant provide a jurisdictional delineation from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which is required in the LIP. Staff also requested a Native Tree Protection Plan as required by Chapter 5 of the LIP. And also, we requested the ESHA development area calculations. Bless you. Because the applicant has not provided this information, staff cannot determine that the proposed project complies with the development area criteria, nor has a variance been requested for the proposed encroachment in the ESHA buffer. So in the materials submitted for the application, there was no site plan that showed the delineated stream and the required 100-foot buffer. Staff has included this image, which is the appeal jurisdiction map, primarily because the LIP's definition of a pillable area includes the 100-foot buffer from the wetland and stream. And as you can see in this GIS image, the western one-half of the site is located within that 100-foot buffer. Since the staff report was published for this item, staff has received correspondence from two neighbors who cite support for the proposed project. And they also described the existing development pattern in the neighborhood, which includes several improvements within the mapped stream and ESHA, excuse me, mapped stream and wetland buffers. There was also a letter in support of staff's recommendation to deny the project. And that does conclude my, my presentation. In closing, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 23-58, denying the subject coastal development permit application. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Renika. John has an additional disclosure?
I have an additional disclosure. 33 years ago, I lived in the property on Bonzel that backs up to this property. And I'm very familiar with the development in the area since I had former neighbors that were there the last 33 years that I've talked, been to their houses many times.
Okay. Rebecca and Parker, can you tell us if we have any kind of opposition or others, any kind of speakers, Zoom or live?
We, we have just received one that's being handed to you.
That's, uh, okay, and he is live in person.
He will follow. We also have a representative of the applicant team, Don Schmitz, who would like to be.
And, and we have one other speaker on Zoom? Okay, so, Don, do you hear that? We have two speakers, just with respect to how much time you want to reserve for rebuttal.
Yes, before we start the clock, I believe that the speaker slip being turned in after the chair has called the matter is improper. And I just saw that speaker slip get submitted.
I'm going to accept it. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. That might be city council.
No, sir. It's the resolution that you adopted, this planning commission, in last August about that in regards to the protocols for this commission. But I'll move on. I'm not afraid of his testimony. So let's go ahead and do 10 minutes. And I'll try to get done then and retain the remainder of the time for rebuttal. Thank you for your time, Commissioners. Congratulations, Chair Hill, and welcome Commissioner Leonard for joining the commission. So I am here on behalf, again, my name is Don Schmitz, on behalf of the Hubstman Family Trust, and want to start off with the history of this property, which begins in 1948. I'm actually very impressed that we found a building permit from 1948. The records are pretty sketchy. That's 75 years ago when this house was first constructed and the pad was graded. There was an addition in 1961. As Mr. Mazza has already illustrated, I know you guys are very familiar with the area. This is a subject property picture from 1964. The red area delineates the historical disturbance, the house, the pad, the yard, the outbuildings, the crossing and the creek and the pad back behind there. In 1975, you can see the photograph, we're just showing you what you already know, which is that this is a neighborhood which has significantly and extensively been historically disturbed and developed. So that would include the city's infrastructure, whereupon Rainsford Drive crosses the creek itself. By a specific definition and a vacuum, that bottom where that road goes across the creek would be considered environmentally sensitive habitat area as well. What I'm seeking tonight is a practical application of the regulations. This is a picture from 1964 and we've overlaid the site visit. You can see highlighted in red is the existing developed area. You can see the home. We're proposing a new hot tub in the existing deck. We're proposing a deck extension and a pool all at grade. The LCP LIP Section 2.1 defines a development area as the approved portion of a project site that is developed, including the building pad and all graded slopes, all structures and all parking areas. That's the development area that has been historically established on the site. Section 3.1 states that existing legally established fuel modification zones are not ESHA. And as you can see, and as you would expect, this entire area is blanketed with legally established fuel modification for what is a fairly intensely developed area. We do not contend otherwise that the stream is, in fact, in and of itself, an ESHA. The stream is an ESHA. It is defined as such in 4.3 of the LCP. The sycamore areas are a, another subject altogether. Those have been accurately surveyed, both by the project surveyor and by the project biologist. The band of light green is the five-foot setback from the canopy of those trees. And from the bio, biology report, by the way, Tony Bonekamp is available, the project biologist, to answer any questions you have at the end of this hearing. The area surrounding the residence does not support native shrubs and trees, with the exception of the western sycamores, which are growing above turf, turf and otherwise weedy under story. It's functioning essentially as landscaping trees. They do not function as any sort of native woodland. And as you can see from the site plan, we are well outside of the protected zone of the sycamore trees. Here's some pictures. You can see the existing yard's been there for 75 years. Just to give you some orientation, the pool and everything would be back towards the house from the area where the picnic table is that you can see in the yard. When is ERB required? So you have to have an ERB review when you are typically within the setbacks of a stream, which was a position that was taken by your staff and the city biologist. However, the rest of the story is 4.4.4 of the LCP that has exceptions. Additions to existing structures that are within the lawfully established graded pad area or the existing developed landscaped area, if there's no graded pad, that do not require additional fuel modification. Check the box. This pool is all on a very old pad in a landscaped area and does not require any fuel modification. ERB review by the LCP is not required. The project's not in ESHA. The existing turf grass area would not be visible from Zuma Creek. There's no potential impacts, according to the consulting biologist of Zuma Creek, and it would not result in any cumulative impacts to Zuma Creek. There will be no impacts from this pool. A native tree report is not required. That's why we didn't spend the many thousands of dollars to generate a native tree report. A native tree report under 5.2 and 5.3, projects with a potential to impact one of the subject species, including the sycamores. There's no potential impacts because the project is not located within five foot of the drip line of those sycamore trees, nor is it located within 15 foot of the trunks. That's the code supplemented by the specific biological report that there will be no impacts to those sycamore trees. The applicant has spent many, many thousands of dollars trying to get to build this pool. We do not think it proper that the city take a position requiring them to spend many thousands of dollars more on something which is demonstrably not required by the law or by the science. A native tree report is not required. And you can see here the location of the pool and it is well outside of the protected zone of the sycamore trees. The project would not have indirect impacts to biological resources and the removal of the turf grass doesn't result in cumulative or individual impacts to biological resources either. Because a swimming pool project is not proposed in ESHA, it should proceed as a coastal development permit exemption. As already pointed out to you by staff, 13.4.1 of the LCP specifies that many classes of development, including swimming pools, landscaping, fences, sheds, garages, are exempt from the requirement for a coastal development permit. Please stay with me, Commissioner. But what about the exemption? There are certain areas where it's not allowed, that exemption. And those are improvements to a single-family structure if it is located on a beach, in a wetland, seaward of the mean high tide line, or in an environmentally sensitive habitat area. That is the law. That's what 13.4.1 says. If you are in an ESHA, and this was an amendment to the Coastal Act, which is reflected in our LCP, then you do not benefit from the coastal development permit exemption. But we're not located in an ESHA. Now, I'd love to show you some great precedent from surrounding properties, but how about if we start with this one? In 2020, the City of Malibu approved APR 17.008. It was an APR, not a coastal development permit, for a new rear yard deck with guardrails and a new fire pit. There's the pool, there's the fire pit, and there's the rear yard deck, which you already approved with an APR, adopting the following findings. The proposed development does not involve any of the extraordinary repair and maintenance activities listed in our LIP Section 13.4.2B, for which a coastal development permit exemption does not apply. The findings went on to state the subject parcel does contain a map stream. Yes, it does. Designated ESHA. Yes, it is, as shown on the LCP ESHA overlay map through the center of the property. However, the proposed scope of work does not take place within the designated ESHA and is not within a protected tree zone. Let me read that to you again. Does not take place within the designated ESHA and is not within a protected tree zone. And accordingly and appropriately, the City of Malibu processed this as an APR. They didn't require a coastal development permit. And in fact, the city's done this in other cases as well. Just two, two properties up located to the north, the city processed a second-story addition to a home well within the 100-foot setback as an APR. They did not require a coastal development permit. Not only is there precedent for this, this is what's legal. This is what's appropriate. So in conclusion, the neighborhood is historically disturbed, to put it mildly. And that's important, Commissioners, because that means that the laws that we're talking about, the codes we're talking about, take that into account. The property has been extensively disturbed since 1948, 75 years. I don't think any of us here were born when this house was built and when that pad was graded. Okay, John, I'm sorry, you didn't have to out yourself that way. The pool is proposed entirely within the graded pad area and the existing developed landscaping area of the existing single-family residence. It will not require additional fuel modification. It's a pool and an act-grade deck, and that's one of the criteria for qualifying for an exemption. It's not located in ESHA. There's no impacts to Zuma Creek. There's no impacts to the protected trees. We have documented that, both with the biological report and the site-specific survey. There's no indirect impacts to ESHA and there's no cumulative impacts to ESHA whatsoever. The project is in fact exempt from a coastal development permit under 13.4.1 as an exempt improvement to an existing single-family home that is not in ESHA or on a beach or between the First Public Road and the Sea. The city's already adopted the findings for this property in the previous APR. Now, all the way back in May of 2021, I met with then-city biologist Dave Crawford. We went over this in very great detail. And he determined that the proposed swimming pool and new deck are proposed within the limits of the existing turf and the proposed hot tub is within an area of an existing deck. The project should be approved pursuant to an APR due to no impacts to biological resources overlapping fuel modification because the proposed project is located within the existing developed area. And the proposed project and proposed project location are acceptable from a biological standpoint based on the existing disturbed area. And we proceeded with the APR application on that basis.
You are at four minutes remaining.
Thank you. And so I'll wrap it up and retain the remainder of time for rebuttal, but our plea to this commission is to please follow the LCP statutes as it pertains to improvements to existing single-family homes and remand this matter back to the plant, to the staff for the processing of an APR. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schmitz. You will have a little under four minutes, 3:54 for rebuttal. And so we have Ryan Embry here, three-minute comment. And, and we have one other on Zoom, correct? Okay. Good evening, Mr. Embry.
Joel, thank you. There was no secretary here to submit to where it says submit here, and I didn't want to interrupt Ms. Brooks while she was giving the report. So I, I know John's, Don's not scared of me. My question really is of the setback because you have another project on the same street, which is at Coastal Commission now for a CDP violation to consider, whether it's a serious violation or not, if there's a substantial issue. I don't know, maybe that's Don's project. He'll be at Coastal. I don't know. But it's, it's not surprising that the neighbors who are similarly situated where a bulk of their property is in the 100-foot setback from this stream, which I would call a massive storm channel for the whole neighborhood up, up the canyon. But if they would also like to have a, a, a pool someday, that they would want to support this. But there, there were other houses, I think, that burned in the neighborhood as well. Maybe this one is. The Rainsford place there is a very unique road that gets washed out. It's impassable when it rains. Residents of Bonzel have trouble exiting the city-conditioned turns into that area because there's been a lot of accidents, there have been fatal accidents in that area in the last three years. And so we have somewhat of a, an issue of how the rains and on Rainsford and how this public street is, is closed under certain conditions, that this is not an insignificant stream. And so if, if you don't want a pool in that area, whether it's going to be structurally compromised or not, I would agree with the staff's interpretation on this one. I'm sorry, it doesn't work for Don's project here, but it's within the 100-foot setback. And the other property on the same street's already a coastal on appeal. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ryan. And we've got somebody on Zoom.
Joe Drummond.
Joe, are you there? Can we hear you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I, I mean, I don't know what Don is talking about. It's...
It's within the 100-foot buffer of 4.6 development standards. So new development shall provide a buffer of no less than 100 feet in width from the outer edge of a canopy or riparian vegetation. Where riparian vegetation is not present, the buffer shall be measured from the outer edge of the bank of the subject stream. New development shall provide a buffer of no less than 100 feet in width from the upland limit of the wetland. So that's one thing. And so, and then, I mean, obviously, the exemptions for the swimming pool cannot apply because it is within Esha there. The applicant has not provided the native tree protection plan as required under LIP Section 5.3 or the jurisdictional delineation or evidence of preliminary approved from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for the map stream and wetland as required under LIP Section 4.4.1. Also, a variance has not been requested for the proposed pool and decking within the Esha buffer. The proposed pool and decking are considered new development as defined in LIP Section 2.1 because it will include land-observing activities, structural development, and the construction of a structure. The applicant has not provided the requested development area calculations or an alternate sighting analysis required for variance finding. The edge of the proposed pool deck would only be 16 feet 3 inches from the existing onsite riparian canopy at its closest point. Presence of this canopy and riparian habitat is confirmed in the site-specific technical memorandum prepared by Glenn Lucas Associates on May 11, 2021. Fluorinated water would definitely get into the protected riparian trees and stream environmentally sensitive habitat area, killing plants and wildlife in there. So this project must be denied to keep the beautiful stream in Esha intact as per staff's recommendation. They must, at the very least, apply for a variance and submit the required findings and everything else requested that they did not submit as requested by planning. So please follow the staff's recommendation and deny this project, which is obviously in Esha and wetland area. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. We've got rebuttal from the applicant.
Again, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the Hope Schuman Family Trust. The speakers in opposition, especially Ms. Drummond, made our case for us by saying repeatedly this project is in Esha. It's not in Esha. For those of you who went to the site and you sat out there on the picnic table in the middle of a lawn where the pool is going to be in the gravel landscaped area between that picnic table and the house, how could anybody possibly assert that this is Esha? Is it new development? Of course it's new development. What does the exemption in the LCP apply to for improvements to an existing single-family home if it's not for new development? Of course it applies to new development. That criteria for the exemption was something that the legislature crafted in the Coastal Act itself. Now, I understand certain regulatory bodies don't like there to be exemptions, don't like there to be limits on their authority, don't like being told, look, this is the type of thing that doesn't rise to the level of a coastal development permit. Remember something, Commissioners. We're not saying we don't have to process a permit. We do have to process a permit. And an APR is, in fact, a thorough review by staff, and they can ask for all sorts of things, including whether or not it's safe from a flood and a drainage standpoint, whether or not it has to be reviewed by Fish and Wildlife. It does not meet the criteria of the jurisdictions of Fish and Wildlife, but if staff determines in the APR review that we have to go to Fish and Wildlife, they can require us to do that as well. But it is not in Esha. It is not under the sycamore trees. It is not within the protected zone of the sycamore trees. It just isn't. And so by continuing to reiterate that and that somehow these property owners, these members of the community, to build a pool which our law under the LCP specifies is supposed to be exempt because it is not in Esha or on a beach or between the First Public Road and the sea, asking them to do all these things and, as Ms. Drummond said, submit an application for a variance, that turns the intent and the black letter of the law entirely on its head. Does the exemption criteria matter or not? On the slides that staff put up themselves, it says for the exemption not to apply, it has to be in Esha. I can pull the slide back up from my presentation and show it to you again. If it's not in the Esha area, it is not requiring a coastal development permit. Now, there's other things that you cannot do as an improvement to an existing single-family home that are not exempt, even on this property or any other property. You can't upgrade the septic system, for instance. You can't put in a water well. You can't build a guest house. There's very strict criteria in regards to that. We abide by that religiously. Why do you think you get all these applications to upgrade a septic system for existing single-family homes? But the criteria is extremely clear. Is this house existing for 75 years? Yes. Was that yard there the entire time? Yes, it was. Was it landscaped? Yes, it was. Is the pool a class of development which is supposed to be exempted from a coastal development permit? Not municipal code review, not an APR, but from a CDP? No question about it. They qualify. I urge you, please, remand this back to the staff for an APR.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. The public comment being concluded, we bring this back up to the dais here, to the commission. And I've got a number of questions. I'll just ask one threshold question before opening it to others. Staff, can you, and this is, I think, for Renika in the first instance and maybe Richard. I see we have two very different interpretations, and so I'm trying to understand how they can be so different, one being the applicant saying that the development can be within five feet of the drip line, and the other being that we have LIP 4.6.1, which wants a buffer of no less than 100 feet from the outer edge of the canopy of riparian vegetation, which I think in this case is the sycamores are riparian. They wouldn't be there otherwise, right? So what is your explanation for why we have such different interpretations of what can be done here?
Well, they both apply. The sycamores are not Esha, so the 100-foot buffer is related to any, there's about five different types of Esha where that 100-foot buffer would apply. And then Chapter 5, which is the Native Tree Protection Ordinance, specifies the five-foot buffer from about five different native tree species. So they both apply.
Are the sycamores, they are or they aren't riparian?
I don't believe they're riparian, but unfortunately, the biologist isn't here. I don't know, Richard, if you have any feedback on that question.
As Renika mentioned, so yes, it's two chapters in the LIP. There's Chapter 5, Native Trees. Chapter 4 is Esha. The riparian habitat is a broad term to describe not only the trees, but also the other plants that are associated with the riparian habitat. And so when speaking with our city biologist on this, she, the concern that she raised was that if you looked where, and I'm sorry that she isn't here, but the edge of that type of habitat, the ecosystem, the trees and the other plants to go along with it, where that was, and then if you added a 100-foot buffer, this project would be in it. And it's been the city's practice that the buffer areas, as well as the actual Esha, have been considered Esha. So, for example, Sea Level Drive, when that was heard by this council or commission, in that project, the buffer area, while the project could scoot around on the site, they couldn't give that 100-foot buffer because they kept, it was, the fuel mod would intrude upon it, which fuel mods consider development. Development would intrude upon it, meaning that that Esha protection was extended to it. So as a city, we have done that. There's also a LUP policy that talks about when you have developed properties and the existing fuel modifications. And when you look at that policy, it extends to a number of Eschas explaining that they aren't Esha when they're within so many 100 feet of development. However, those policies are clearer than when it's riparian Esha. That type of application does not apply. Riparian Esha gets the strictest types of protections. I hope I didn't diverge too much from the question, the answer you wanted.
So just to be clear, the fuel mod areas are irrelevant when we're talking about the riparian Esha because it's, the stream is there regardless?
Right. And some examples of that, just if it helps, you know, we had the one CDP application that was heard earlier this year. I want to say it was on Cuthbert, where that was a developed lot. I think all of us could agree it was heavily developed before the fire. However, you had new development being placed there, and we still had to be cognizant and process the proper types of applications because there was a stream that cut through that property. And yes, it was fully manicured, but nonetheless, there was a stream.
Okay. I see. I'll follow up a question. The stream, quote stream, is a blue line stream, correct?
That's correct.
And it goes approximately 12 miles into the mountains. Okay? It's Zuma Canyon. Goes up to the top of the mountains. So as you said, a stream is an Esha, period. And a 100-yard setback applies to this stream, not just, not just the riparian habitat around it. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe the standard states that if there is riparian habitat, then it's taken from the edge of the riparian habitat.
Well, I'm talking about a stream. You can have a stream without riparian habitat. Okay? Now, to give, now, to give an example of that neighborhood, since I lived there for quite a while, sycamores are the native tree. Okay? They go all the way up the canyon up to the park. Every, practically every part, property on the stream is covered with sycamores. So to say they're not natural is slightly odd. Okay? Now, so we have a stream. We have a stream that's required to get fishing game because it's under the jurisdiction of federal government because it's a blue line stream.
Or the state of California.
State of California. Okay? It's just a law. It's a stream. If it's got a blue line, you can argue about the others. Now, does it have an effect? In 1900, early 80s, I personally saw three cars try to get across Rainsford and get washed down the creek. It disappeared with the drivers in them. One of them got out the sunroof, one of them waited till they crashed, and then got out. That stream gets extremely wide. It cannot be crossed by cars. So what we see in these pictures, in my experience, is a stream that took out the underpass to get to Zuma Beach. That's what did it, the last time it rained there. It's been, what, three, four years? It does have a cumulative effect whenever you develop near the stream. So how could we not get fishing game is my question, and why are we just talking about riparian habitat versus the fact that it's designated Esha, even without the habitat?
Well, staff is saying all of that, basically. Yeah, we're saying that it's Esha. It's also a mapped wetland, which requires a delineation from fishing game, Fish and Wildlife as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions down this end?
I would just like some further, you know, Don, or the applicant's representative brings up some 13.4.1. How does this work is the fact that the swimming pool is supposed to be exempt because it's not located, I mean, it's in the disturbed Esha, but it's not in the Esha? So my question is sort of how does that apply if it very clearly states that the swimming pool is exempt?
So subsection A of that section lists a number of things that you can have associated with a home to be exempt from a coastal development permit. Then you have subsection B, which then is, are the exceptions to the exception. I hate that term. But what they do is they put qualifiers on there that you could have all this stuff, but in these situations, there's a concern of an impact to coastal resources. And so if you fit, if you fall under one of the criteria in subsection B, then the exemption does not apply to the property. And in this case, there is a qualifier in subsection B which states that if work is taking place in an Esha.
But the applicant clearly shows us that it's not taking place in the Esha. It's taking place outside of, in what's called disturbed Esha. And I think that that case has been made very clearly. So that's what I want to best understand.
So to get specifically to your point of disturbed Esha, because of the LUP policy that talks about the different types of Eschas and when they are disturbed, so for example, it's pretty clear that fuel modification is considered development and it's disturbing Esha. And the LUP states that fuel modification areas is defined or required by LA County. There are a couple other, I forget, I'd have to look up to give you the exact, but that's an easy example. Those areas are not Esha. However, riparian Esha is protected regardless if it's in the fuel mod areas or not. And so the work that they're proposing falls within the required buffer area. And so, as I mentioned earlier, the city's practice has been to protect buffer areas. We consider those to be Esha, if you will. And since this work is taking place in that area, that is why we believe that the proper exemption, or excuse me, that the exemption is unable to be applied because it falls under subsection B1, if I'm not mistaken.
The applicant stated or implied at least that there was the prior development of the deck next to the house. Presumably, that was also within the 100 feet from the riparian. I mean, it makes sense to me that you have that 100-foot buffer, you protect that. Was that prior work not within that same 100 feet? And if so, how was that allowed at that point, and how is that different from what we're talking about now?
So that work was under the guidance of the previous planning director. And when this project was submitted, that was, the concern was raised by the city biologist. What I did then, because I'm aware of the previous decision, was I spoke with the Coastal Commission and verified my recommendation on this project with Coastal Commission staff. Also, as we mentioned in the staff report, we also provided the applicant, if they wanted to debate this, the opportunity to debate it through the executive director's review section in Chapter 13 of the city's LIP. There's a process by which if you disagree with the city on, or not necessarily the city, but also an aggrieved party disagrees with the city on the issuance or lack of an issuance for an exemption, or as this would be a categorical exemption, I don't like using that term because we often use categorical exemption for SEQA, but these are considered categorical exemptions in the city's local coastal program. There is a process by which the Coastal Commission will render an official opinion on that. It's outlined in Chapter 13. I can find it for you. But yes, so previously, under the previous director, yes, an application was approved. There was work there. But as I mentioned, new biologist brought it to my attention. I took a look at the city's local coastal program and also seeked guidance from the Coastal Commission on these types of projects to make sure that what I believed was correct was actually something that we could follow.
So we have a hint of what might be out there if somebody were to appeal this to them. I wonder, just while it's fresh in my head, I don't, do we have evidence when there is a flooding event from this stream, how far up it goes, and would there be any significant difference between the pool, for example, would it reach the pool versus the deck that was approved previously? Is that a significant difference in the distance, or are both outside the scope of any potential flood?
I would say from visiting the site, they look like they're out. It looks like the water would more push onto the, their property on this property that's on the opposite side of where the house is.
Because the, the bank is cut, right?
Well, the, the bank would push up on their side, but the grade's a little bit lower. So I think the water may go that way a little bit more.
So, but do we know historically how far up the, this parcel of floods ever come?
I would just say that historically, I have surfed on a surfboard in that creek when there was a high flow of water. And I would not see, even at that time, any water coming remotely close to this.
Well, I would, I would disagree in that.
That was more recent than John's time of doing 30 years ago.
No, but most recently, it washed out our access to Zuma Beach. And that, that drains a huge water drainage, huge.
John.
Miles and miles and miles.
No, that's all, we all accept that.
It's a large watershed. There's no, there's no question that a lot of water comes down there. And I think that, that there's been a lot of debris that's deposited in the underpass at Zuma, but that's sort of unrelated to the pool here. I think what is important is if, I could ask Renika, you pulled up a slide that was a Google Maps slide? I just had a, my question is, is how were some of the pool, there's a pool that's relatively close to the stream. It's upstream. It's actually on Bonzel, but it's very close to this same watershed. And my question is how that was approved and when that was approved? I don't know if we have all that information right now, but I was, wanted to know whether that was approved under a CDP or an APR. It was part of your presentation, not Don's.
I did not do any research on that property to see when it was.
Can you just pull up the drawing?
Yeah, we're pulling it up. Yep.
But, and then, Richard, in the meantime, to clarify, so this approval that was granted for this fire pit and deck, if that were to come before you right now, you would not recommend that for an administrative plan review. That would be going for a CDP with a recommendation for denial based on where it's located.
I would need to look at the specifics of it because.
That's a fair answer.
I think that's the best way to say it because that was a while ago. I know, like I said, that was discussed with the previous director, but I'm trying to remember the merits. And also, you know, to me, one thing here is that there's a lawn here, but there isn't a physical structure out that far. Whereas I think on that other one, it was between some structures, but I would want to look at it.
It's definitely attached. So here, and this.
For, for the record, I can show you, is this what the pool you're talking about? It's the house immediately up the road from there?
No, but I think that that was pre-fire. But there is that, yeah, I mean, that's a example of it. But there's also one that's further, there's one that's further up just past Rainsford that looks relatively newer.
I thought maybe if we had the exact address, they could just look it up in all bases as we're talking.
It's immaterial. It's different.
I'm just saying is if we go up onto Bonzel, there's a handful of them that look like they're like right on the creek, way closer proximity to this. So that's sort of what my question was, was how are those approved? Like in this photo here, you see a tennis court that's clearly within that, that buffer and, you know, could potentially have a way larger impact on drainage into that area instead of a pool. Because as everybody knows, you're not allowed to drain a pool. But.
Well, John is right that these other sites aren't directly relevant because we're, maybe you're going to say this, because we're not talking about a variance.
No, I understand. So I understand, I recognize that we're not discussing that right now. My question was just to understand how those were approved and then maybe very well have been a variance.
Or they could have been before 75. If you notice where the star is, you can see the, the, all the trees around there. They are much wider there because there is not a deep channel like most of the rest of Bonzel. If you look down farther down, you see how deep it is. There it's wider. So you get this massive amount of water coming in and it spreads out.
I, I would beg to differ on that. I think that's also because the property owner here hasn't developed the side on the other side of the creek. So that land's sort of.
You think those trees just grew on their own? Or they didn't grow on their own?
I actually think that most trees grow on their own, especially in this area because they don't appear to be being watered all the time.
Well, I lived right to the right of that. Okay? And when it rained, that was the widest part of the creek of all of Bonzel. Okay?
And that's because of the elevation. I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I just don't, I'm trying to fully understand the, you know, here we have representatives who who's saying that the project should be exempt from these things. And we have staff that's saying it shouldn't. And I have to, you know, we're weighing that out right now.
Right. And what, what I think they're saying, and I'm saying is, there's Esha, there's Esha exemptions, there's riparian habitat, and then there's a stream. And this is a blue line stream, which is defined as Esha. You could have, you could have cement pillars in the middle of it. It's still Esha. It's a stream. It's a blue line stream. And that's the way it's defined. You have a setback from a, from these streams required. You can see, that doesn't look like Esha to me, but it's defined as Esha.
I think, I think that position and interpretation is pretty clear. Dennis?
Okay. So to me, we've already set a precedent by having some work done. And I know that Director Malika is, is letting us know that Director Blue is the one that approved it. But we still have a record of work done in the same spot. This is a pool. It's in the ground. It's way the heck away from everything else. It's tucked up against the house, pretty much that other deck that's sitting there. We have work that's already been done. And my feeling is that this is too easy. There's nothing that this pool is doing to affect any part of the environment anywhere along that creek, anywhere along anybody's property, anywhere. It's a pool in the ground, out of the way, tucked up against the house, a mile and a half away from the stream, not in the middle of the yard. And gee, I guess, I guess when people moved off of Zuma, and as I discussed before, I looked at that one lot that we've, that we've talked about before down the street. That creek scares the hell out of me. But I guess if, if you've lived there and the house has been there since 1948, I guess they're, these folks are taking a chance and they're going to hang in there with this. So I feel that this is, this should be approved. There's, it's not hurting a thing, not environmentally, not other neighbors, not anything else, anywhere else. So that's, that's probably where I stand. I, actually, I'd make a motion to approve, or to approve the pool as it stands.
Can you make a comment on that?
Go ahead, John.
This specifically has violated a state law. Okay? Fishing game has not approved this. They are the ones that have to. They must. No question about it. That's, that one on Cuthbert, that one on Cuthbert, you're saying every house in Malibu that doesn't comply is okay?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Saying there's a precedent that's been set for work.
No, 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 no. This is state versus city.
Let me, let me, let me try to.
So let me know, let me finish. Okay? You can't just say, gee, I like it, you approve it. Right now, in coastal, excepted as a, as a, whatever they call it, germane point or, or point of significance or whatever it is, is exactly the same situation, probably 400 feet away. And they took it to consider it because it violates the LIP and the state law. And those, a stream is a stream is a stream.
Let me see if I can square the circle here.
Can I, I don't, I'm not ready to second it yet, but I just want to ask that, would you be in support of this project if it was conditioned on the basis of having a letter from the Department of Fish and Wildlife to support it?
And if we had a city biologist that supported it? And, and if it, after it goes to coastal, which it will, it got approved, fine, they can build their house. But it's not going to.
Building a house, this is about a pool.
Pool, whatever. But when you take, when you take.
There's a big difference there, Vice Chair.
Now, you have to remember, we always, we thought the house at the end of the stream next to Trancas. Oh, that's cool. What did the coastal do? You have to tear your house down if it gets hit by a wave. Okay? So things that were approved in the past, after, before 1972, don't really cut it as far as getting through coastal.
If I may, if I may, just.
And, and that's, the real important thing is, do we want to go against staff, go against our city biologist, not have the proper data from fish and wildlife, and approve something? Now, you can continue it and say, bring it back and let's find this out. But, but to just say, ah, staff's wrong, we like it. And never have seen a flood go through there.
Don't put words in my mouth. That's not what I said.
Let me try to square the circle here. Dennis, you may be absolutely right in your, the practicalities of it. It works on the side. It's not going to blah, 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 blah. Not going to, you know, it would work there. But what we have to do in this instance is really be looking at the code and are we interpreting it right because of the precedence and how this will happen down the line with somebody else. So it's, it's not just this one site we're looking at. We're, are we doing the process right legally here? I think that's, and I think that's the concern. The city has a, has a good concern about this.
Can I, and maybe you would accept this or not, what I would like to see is this come back to us is a CDP with an application, I think, for, for a variance for it to go here and have a letter from fishing, Department of Fish and Wildlife, saying that it's okay for it to go there. And at that point, I'd be ready and comfortable to approve it.
I, I think if I understand that.
And I don't know if that's the way to do that or not.
This is a CDP.
Yeah.
Implicitly, that, to, to call it a variance, and if you needed 100 feet from the riparian drip line and you only have 16 feet, we'd be, we'd be looking at it through a different lens of, you know, normally, we sort of say, well, you know, we might give you 50% off in the variance or whatever. But now if you're saying it's supposed to be 100 and we want 16, so that, that's a different way of looking at it. I don't know how successful it is.
It's not that. It's, I think the other thing in looking at like a different locate, like say if we're looking at this site and we're saying like, well, where else could you cite a pool on there? Right? In terms of the pool being in close proximity to the house, that's the most practical place for it to go. Right? What I'm, would be hesitant, and I think that it could potentially push us towards that direction, is if we do do that and it comes back with a pool that has to go on the opposite side, creating more development, more disturbance to an area that's not being used right now at all, and seeing or citing a pool over there. I think that they may have an elevation issue, which would, could cause that to be closer to where the issue would happen with the stream. But, I mean, I feel that as it's designed right now, now, it may not be, I think that staff, you know, and the more that I've, we've been sitting through this hearing, I think that they very much did, you know, their job. And I think it's super not cool for an applicant to be given direction on one project where you're completely approved and everything, and then you think that you're going down the same road. It doesn't go the way that you think it is. And you're making the argument that it should go that way. Like I just, that's a very hard thing to do. But I, like everybody else, has made mistakes. And planner apparently made some mistakes in the past on approval for something that seemed super minor, but could have gone into something that was more complicated. So.
Well, Scott, I will second your motion if it is come back with a approvable CDP.
So, okay, so.
Hang on, hang on.
No, no, no.
Drew's had his hand up here for a minute.
The hearing's open. It's closed. You want to call Ryan and the other people back up?
Calling Ryan and the other people back up if he has a specific question or if he wants to hear from the applicant. Like I would want to hear from the applicant that they're comfortable with that.
So we need a specific question, not a speech.
Okay, so Patrick?
That's funny coming from you.
Correct. So, so.
I'm not the audience. I'm not the audience. And it's not funny coming from you when you're saying.
All right, guys, this is getting personal. We don't need the personal.
Commissioner Peak, you're exactly right. Direct a question to Mr. Schmitz. He is familiar enough with, I'm sure, will abide by said question.
25 words.
Don, what my question is, is based on the conversation that you've seen us had, are you willing to, are you amenable, and I'm sure client amenable, to having that work out in that form where we would be coming back?
Through the chair, Commissioner Peak, I hope that doesn't go towards my 25 words. Having to process a CDP variance means a denial of any pool on this property. That being said, the fish and wildlife issue, the flood control issues are things that if you remand this back to staff or an APR, we would be perfectly comfortable with you directing staff that we must get clearance from fish and wildlife and we must get clearance from the Department of Public Works on all flood control issues. So that can be addressed. But processing a CDP with a variance, it means essentially with the state mandated findings, we don't get to do a pool. And on the other side of the house is where the septic system is, on the street side of the house.
All right. Thanks, thank you, Dennis.
I know that. But, so my other issue with that is, and maybe this is more a question for, for Richard or Pat, is why can't that happen? Why can't that come back as a CDP and make those findings? Just because it merely cannot happen?
If I could sort of reframe the question, how would that affect the interpretation that you've put forth? Would we be asking you to back off the interpretation about riparian, riparian habitat that you have decided? Or does, would this fit with it to say, yeah, as long as we satisfy fish and wildlife and flood issues, that that would, that would somehow get you around your interpretation?
Can I add to that question?
If it's not, if it doesn't make it yet more complicated.
Okay. Why would this require a CDP since it's in a, a stream Esha? Why wouldn't it require a CDP?
So to answer the question, the way that, in my opinion, this should be processed is through the CDP process. And it would be a variance to reduce the required Esha setback because this work would take place within the, we'd be intruding in the 100-foot buffer. The, I think the concern from Mr. Schmitz is whether or not staff would agree with supporting that. You know, at, at this point in time, the variance findings, I don't believe have ever been submitted to the staff. So I don't know if they can make an argument that, you know, a number of properties in the areas have pools. So for example, I believe the house that the commissioners were pointing out tonight, 6,400, that that's a new house that was processed through the CDP process and the pool was part of the CDP. And so in there, it would be processing this application similar to that. So we'd have to look at the findings. And the findings would have to demonstrate that there is not a concern with any flooding or impact on the stream. There's not a concern of impact on the existing habitat. And if an argument could be made that there is a burden on the property, many folks in that area all have pools and that this wouldn't result in a further encroachment. I hope I've answered all, both commissioners' questions.
So Skylar, could I make a motion that we send it back to staff, bring it back with the CDB with the questions we've asked answered?
I'll second it for discussion, but Drew had a question.
I have a question originally from.
I'm a little confused on Don's presentation where he's proving that it is exempt from a CDP to your interpretation. Do you dispute his claims? I believe that the fundamental difference between the beliefs between Mr. Schmitz and myself lie in the fact that Mr. Schmitz does not believe that the buffer area is considered Esha and the Esha stops at the, what is riparian habitat. However, it, as I mentioned, it's been this city's practice that we have considered the buffer areas as Esha. And part of the reason for that is that we are concerned about serial development and that if we did not treat the two the same, which you'd end up with, and I've been around here long enough to see people try this, submit a, an APR application first, get whatever that might be, and then come in later and apply for the coastal development permit because you know you can't get what you're getting with that APR under the CDP. And so that is the reason I believe why the city along, and this is one of the reasons I should just say, because we've also. because we've also, as I mentioned, conferred with the Coastal Commission on these types of issues before and we try to be aligned with them because we don't want things to get appealed. We do our best to try not to have Coastal Commission staff or Commission appeal our projects as a city. But it, like I said, as I mentioned earlier tonight, we have looked at buffer areas as part of esha and treated it the same and allotted it the, the same protections.
I would, I would say.
The example that he's provided, that.
But, you know, we have an APR that went through without a appeal from Coastal for the other part of the project.
Or the public.
I think Commissioner Mazza pointed out the, the, the prime key there. Correct. Nobody filed an appeal. That's right. However, we did not necessarily provide a notice to the Coastal Commission. We, we only publish notices as required by the code. We do put a notification of the APRs on the city's website, but it, it's not like a CDP application in which we actually send per chapter 13, a notice of hearing requirements. And when the city issues an exemption pursuant to the LIP, per the LIP, we are only required to maintain a list of the exemptions and addresses and, I think, owner information. We have to just maintain that list in case we are ever asked. We are not required to provide, I hope I get this right, Pat. There's no requirement that we actively share that information with anybody. It's only if we are requested to share it.
Okay, so if I can just recap or be reminded, the motion on the table is the, which, you made it. Is it the, the CDP in variance or is it the APR plus wildlife? Fish and.
The motion is the CDP. They come back with, they, the motion is they come back with a CDP.
CDP in variance with a recommendation from Fish and Wildlife.
And I, I would say that seems to make sense just looking at the map and seeing the pools and knowing Don is a bright guy. He can look at these pools and make a good case about privileges and, you know, all the, the factors that go into a variance.
So, so leave, leave it to, he can make a case. We can make a case. They can make a case. We leave it to the staff to come back and us reevaluate it under that motion.
Essentially, that's what would be happening, I guess.
Yeah, and that's, so I'd like to call a question unless there's any other discussions.
I was going to, I think the city journey had a comment.
No, the, the director was just updating me on the permitting history of that house next door.
Got it. Can I, before we get to that point, I would like to ask a question of Mr. Schmitz.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, and I know that your, your client, the owners are sitting here next to you, that they understand where we're at and where we're going with this and that you guys are. I know it's not the direction that you guys as the applicant were asking for, but are you clear in what we would be requesting based on that?
We're clear that you're basically telling us that we could go back and process a coastal development permit and a variance to get the Fish and Wildlife and the flood control issues, which we could do under an APR, but that's the direction you're going.
Okay. I, I don't so much as have the flood control issue. To me, it's more the Fish and Wildlife because I think that if you're willing to take that risk, you may be foolish. But if you think that it's fine, then it's fine. But if John wants, do you want the flood stuff in there? Or, I don't think it's necessary because I think that that's going to get worked out with staff.
Well, I think the fact that we have damaged the city property and, and it's a blue line stream is enough for them to have to study that. But that's up to the, their staff. As far as I'm concerned, all we're doing is referring it back to staff and they have to come up with the answers to, to recommend a CDP. Or not recommend, or not recommended or recommended under a CDP application.
I'm really uncomfortable. I would like to just be able to refer this back and have this be done administratively. But I recognize that you guys want to have a full hearing on it, which I'm not, it's not the end of the world. I just think it's super unfair to an applicant to have waited so long and gone through this process and be on this hearing. And now we're basically sending them back to go back to the back of the line and submit again. So I don't, is there a way to make this recommendation and have this project like come back in four months from now? Or, I know that it's, because we can't really continue it because it's not the exact item that's in front of us. But what I don't want to do is see this be coming back in front of us in two and a half years from now.
Yeah, this is a question for Richard.
This is a CDP.
This is a question, Richard. Question for Richard, is, is there any sort of expedited track that this could go on to get back sooner? I mean, a lot, a lot of the work's been done already, right? So.
So we have an application. We have that. So the question is, I, I think the, the first thing is staff needs material to get to work. And so it would be a combination of Mr. Schmitz's office providing us those materials. And once we could deem it complete, bring it back. I, I really, I hate to say this, I don't see much work here. It's, it's a pool. I, I don't disagree with the situ, this is seems, this may seem like a silly situation, but these are our codes. To me, what I see in front of me is we would just need to bring you back updated referrals. I don't believe this would need to go in front of the environmental review board. As Mr. Schmitz demonstrated, there is an exception from the requirements of an ERB review. That, that's all that, that 4.4, it doesn't get us around the esha issue still. So that would come to you guys. But it's a matter of how quick they could, they could get it to us. And I'm looking at the planner. I hate to put her on the spot, but she is nodding. I probably ought to also mention to you guys, Renika just passed her AICP. Probably should have told you that at the beginning of the hearing.
Congratulations, Renika.
Way to hide the headline.
So we'll get a shameless plug in there. But I, I would say we could be back here. The public notice on that is roughly one month. I think it, it could be done within a couple of months. If, like I said, we just need to get the materials to us, which I know that his office.
So.
Agency referrals and, and the case for variance, basically.
Correct.
But I, so, but I, so I want to be clear on how to make the motion. Is the motion saying we're taking this item, we're continuing, continuing it to a date uncertain, but with the direction sort of of staff that we're expecting to get this back in March or April of this coming year once they can get the information to you? Is that, are we comfortable with that direction?
Yeah.
All right. So I'm good with that.
Call a question.
Call the roll call.
Roll call, please. That, that's mine.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Well, you've still got a path ahead, guys. We know we've got another item here. I'd like to take a break. What do you need? Is five minutes enough? Do you need longer? Five-minute break? So it's 8:39. How about we come back at 8:46? Everybody, don't, don't talk to commissioners and turn, turn your, turn your Zoom screens off. Birding cats kind of thing, right? We, we did drop a pretty big item. All right, we're back, back up to the, to the table here. We are moving on now to item 5D. Coastal Development Permit Number 22-057. An application for a new second unit and onsite wastewater treatment system serving the second unit at 7,058 Fernhill Drive. Do we have any disclosures?
I visited the, the property yesterday and I saw nothing other than what's in the staff report. I did ask a question about the septic system because there's a separate septic system the city required for them to be able to build this. And the main septic system is located on the back part of the property.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get there. Dennis?
Same. I met with Dominic today and just looked at where it was going to go and, and nothing new. It's not in the staff report. Thank you.
Drew?
I drove by the site today and took a look from out on the street.
I went by with John Mazza, was it yesterday? Day before yesterday? Noticed that the fixtures on the driveway aren't dark sky compliant, but otherwise nothing new.
I went yesterday with Craig. We looked through the slats in the fence and couldn't see a whole lot, but we saw something.
Okay. May I have a staff report, Mr. Allen?
All right. Well, I see the, the owners here and the, and the audience here. If you, if there are any comments necessary. All right, good evening, Chair Hill, members of the Atlantic Commission. The item here before you tonight is a new second unit and a new septic system, onsite wastewater treatment system serving the second unit. And there are some various site improvements as well as part of this application. So here's a vicinity map showing the subject property in Point Doom on the east side of Fernhill. And nothing more to say about that. In more detail, so this second unit is 891 square feet. It's 18 feet tall in some areas. It is detached from the main structure. The second unit does have an attached 285-square-foot garage. The other main component of this application, as I said before, is the new septic system to serve the second unit. And the various site improvements I mentioned are just sort of, sort of some cleanup work here. Removal of two storage sheds in the south side yard. One accessory structure also shed in the rear yard. Removal of a brick patio in the south side yard on the theme of improving a permeable coverage. A portion, sorry, the, the north driveway, which will access the second unit, is currently a concrete pad and that's going to be converted to a permeable gravel. And also a portion of the main driveway located along the south of the property will be converted from a permeable concrete to permeable gravel. So here's a, a close-up via Google Maps of the property. So you get to see the main house in the center, the main driveway along the south. And you'll see that part of the second driveway already in the, in the northwest, that rectangular shape. And then the, there's also a pool in the rear yard. You'll see that rooftop in the rear yard along the back property line. That's the rear shed that's going to be removed. And various sheds along the south property line, those will be removed and it'll be shown in the next slide. So here's a existing slash proposed site plan. So this really focuses on the proposed second unit shown in pink, sort of in the front yard. But outside of, of the front yard setback, you've got the, the residential unit and then you've got the attached garage. So. So, and you'll see here that the, the access to this is no longer a very wide concrete driveway. It's been reduced to just a narrow, let's see, there's a twelve-foot wide gravel driveway. So the existing driveway to the south really won't be changed except for that little portion halfway through, which will be converted to gravel, as I mentioned earlier. Towards the back of that driveway is where the brick patio is. That will be removed. Then you'll see two sheds. I'm not sure if I can zoom in, but two sheds designated for removal and one will remain along the south property line. There's also that rear yard shed that will also be removed. And really the, the reasoning for that is this property was really approaching the, the TDSF limit and impermeable coverages limit. So we had to do what we can to, to accommodate this. So these are just some elevation views of the proposed second unit and attached garage. As you see, there is a portion that goes up to eighteen feet, which is allowed per code. But this is a sole single-story structure. And as I mentioned before, there is a septic component. This is the approved septic plan that I just took from the environmental health referral. And you'll see the proposed second unit in the front and with the attached garage. And you'll see the proposed system serving that. And you'll also notice that the existing system is located in the rear yard and that will remain. Sorry. That concludes staff presentation and we recommend that you adopt planning commission resolution number twenty-three fifty-seven approving the project as conditioned. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a staff presentation? I mean, a applicant presentation? Answer questions? Okay, great. Do we have any speaker slips or Zoom speakers?
No, there's no raised hands.
No, no interest. Okay. Let me just ask, first disclosure, I forgot. I did have email with Planner Allen. I had a question about the side yard setback numbers. It's probably not relevant. And some discussion about whether this is or isn't between the, the first street and the coastline, which we can talk about. And Skylar, can you clarify what your question was about the OWTS or your comment?
Oh, my question to, to Dominic when I was there, and it was before I had read through everything, was how did your septic system do to accommodate for this? And the quick response was we had to put in another one. And that's what's in front of us.
Okay. So we are, we are back up to the table now then, closing the, the formal public hearing. Back up for deliberation among us. John, question?
Yes. Could we see the last plan again? Okay. I'm wondering this. It says it's approved August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, source project plans two thousand twenty-three. How does that happen?
So that's the, that's the certification stamp?
That's the what?
That's like the, that's the stamp of, of Lawrence Young. So, so this was actually approved. This, this is just a, like a snippet of the overall plan.
No, I understand that. I'm asking about the dates. It was approved.
That's because.
Almost a year before.
John, that's because it takes so effing long for people to go through this process.
No, no. You're misunderstanding, Mike. Look at the dates on the stamp and on the plans. Okay.
So we. Yeah, the source of the plans of the submittal for this part of the project, when he went through that part of the project a year ago.
No, the source of the plant, project plans two thousand twenty-three. The approval is two thousand twenty-two.
That's just the sighting that he has on his computer for that sheet.
Yeah. I don't think this is a relevant question.
The, the actual approval date from environmental health is last year.
What?
The approval date is December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. He just waited. He said, he, so he, where did the stamp come that says August second, thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two? The blue stamp on there, the approval.
That might be the received by date?
No, I believe you're talking about the August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, that's under Lawrence Young's signature. I, Larry Young's not here to answer to this, but my assumption would be, judging by the color and the fact that it's off angle, like his, is that's the date that Larry Young certified his work. He's the engineer of record for the wastewater system. So this was the day that he completed his review and then it was submitted to the city. And our reviewer, as I believe Fletcher mentioned, completed his review a, a year ago, almost, December fifteenth.
Yeah, that was, the environmental health stamp was from December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It was off the left of this.
My question is, I guess I'm not clear. Below that August thirtieth, it says the source of the, the source is two thousand twenty-three after he approved it.
John, that's just a, that's his, Fletcher's paperwork, right? You're just saying it's a two, twenty-three plan. I don't.
Oh, sorry. You're talking about the, yeah.
Yeah. I, I just wonder how you can approve something before he has a source to approve.
This, this is taken from a sort of a consolidated set of plans that we include.
So he backdated his approval on a new plan.
No, no.
This, this whole plan set was put together probably months ago.
Are you saying that that, that note down on the bottom wasn't there when he approved it?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I added that.
Got you there.
Yes.
Okay. And then, of course, we have on the other plan, we have nine hundred square feet for the garage and it's going to be changed to eight, whatever it is, right?
Two eighty-five.
Two, two eighty, no, eight hundred and fifty-one or something.
That's the size of the guest house. The size of the garage is two hundred and eighty-five square feet.
Correct. The size of the guest house is on the plans as nine hundred square feet. Okay? Is that going to be corrected?
Yes.
On the plans, because one of our resolutions says the plans as of X. So we, do we need to correct that? The plans of whatever date you've corrected?
Yeah. So we've had multiple iterations of plans along the way. So I worked with the applicant to get these numbers updated, square footages, all, all that. So this one just slipped through, but the other sheets are, that show the eight hundred and ninety-one.
No, I understand that. But our resolution says use the plans and not the eight, fifty, ninety-one or whatever it is. So we're going to correct those plans and put in the resolution the date of those plans, right?
What we can do, if the commission likes, is when it's time to make a motion, that motion could include a condition on the app, on, to add to the resolution, that the square footage be corrected to reflect the number that's decided upon by this commission.
I would like to make that motion at this time.
Okay. Well, that'll be part of the motion.
Hang on, hang on. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second it.
Okay. For discussion, we have a motion on the table now.
Okay. Now, these plans show the big driveway. The other plans show a smaller driveway you just showed us. Which one is it going to be?
The smaller.
Yeah. So this was, again, this was dated.
The one before this.
This was dated from last December. So some of these changes have occurred since then. And so, yeah, we can make those updates.
Okay. My question is, I don't see a fire department turnaround.
It's the original, it's right there. It's the orig, it's there. It's on the original driveway. You can, you're looking at it. It's right there.
Can we see the prior plan? Yeah, there's, is this what it's going to be?
So this is the, sort of a combination, like a hybrid of an existing and proposed plan here. So the turnaround you'll see on the main driveway along the south.
Okay. Those squares on the bottom.
And that hammerhead portion just above it, yes.
Fletcher, can I ask you a question about the fire department? Did the fire department sign off on this project that's designed?
Yeah, we have a fire department referral, I believe.
All right, great. Thank you.
And now, it's non-compliant on its front fence and on its lighting. Is that correctable on, on, when we, Richard, on when we do a, a new approval? We have non.
I think that, John, I think that any lighting that's related to this structure has to be dark sky lighting. Any lighting that's elsewhere on the property is going to sunset whenever the city enforces that for all of the property owners in the city.
Okay. But it's not.
That are residential.
We have a provision for night lighting on this project. And does that cover the whole project or just the guest house?
I believe it just covers the guest house.
Just the guest house. And in fact, there is no lighting proposed, which was a wonder I had because just the other day on the skate park, you said it's code that you need the light on the bathroom. Guess this is residential, so you don't necessarily need exterior light.
You, you probably do need one.
Yeah.
But you can also get away with it sometimes. I've, it's up to the building. But if there's an exiting door, you have to be able to turn a light on.
Yeah. But it's not code. It's, it's dark sky.
You also have to remember that it hasn't gone through all of the building and safety plan check, which is what's going to happen.
Okay.
So.
I know. I'm just wondering whether our resolution says you got to go dark sky. And it does, correct?
Yes, we've got conditions fourteen through twenty referencing the outdoor lighting. So.
Okay. And then the non-compliant fence and foliage in the front, since you're punching a new hole or changing the, the entrance, is that going to be corrected?
Are they building, are they building new gate or is it the same gate?
That's not part of the application.
Yeah, exactly. So the, all the, all the same, can you come up to the mic real quick?
Hang on. We, I'm sorry. We, we don't need, we don't need. Right?
No, but I was asking a question to confirm that the gate is not changing and that it's all staying there. That, and that's what he's saying is yes, I'm just putting that on the record.
Okay. We just heard from staff they're not changing. So I don't know. Just moving forward.
Okay. My question is.
John, I'm sorry. We, we got the applicant up here. You can tell us what's happening with the gate.
Yeah, just to expedite. The gate is existing. There are two gates. So this gate is already there. It's been there since I bought the property back in ninety-seven.
Okay.
You're saying that that gate has been there for twenty, that, that fence has been there for twenty-seven years?
Yes.
Has not changed?
Has not changed.
And when you got, okay, was it ever permitted to be six feet high?
It was there when I bought the property.
But that's not my question. Was it, was it ever permitted to be that high?
Well, we looked at historical photos and it's been there. We, I could not find permits for the existing wall. But we, I mean, there's a, there's been a lot of improvements to the property over the years. They've, they've.
I know. Okay. My question really is, is it a legal fence?
I'm, we didn't find permits for that specific development, but I mean, it's been there a long time.
Okay. Now, and I guess the other question you've discussed with Craig is, why is this not the last existing, the last street to the ocean? Since there's, it's in the canyon, it goes down to the ocean and there's no street there.
And for, for the record, this, there's a gap between Gray Fox and Cliffside where this does go directly to the ocean. The relevance of that is the, in the coastal act, there's, if, if, if you don't provide access to the shore, in a case where you are the last, where you are between the last street and the ocean, then there needs to be adequate access existing nearby.
And, and it also makes it appealable.
Makes it appealable. But, and so the question, and I don't know that it's much of a question, is does the Point Doom Headland staircase qualify as nearby access by precedent? Is that?
That qualifies as nearby access for the entire southeast portion of Point Doom.
In terms of like how we've applied precedent?
For access for the other point. I don't see how any of this is applicable at all. Only.
Yeah.
Way that it could be is if the permit for the other properties that were permitted over the last fifteen years on Fernhill, I believe if you were to go the home on the corner of Cliffside, if you're implying that this house is the last house, which you may be able to say that.
Exactly.
First off, it doesn't touch the beach, so that's.
No, 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 no. That's not, that's not.
I know that that's not what the issue is, but if any of those other projects on Cliffside, on the opposite side of the bluff, would then be having to be considered the last house as well. So I'm just asking if they have been considered that way or not. Because I just, I want to make sure that we're following what's been done thus far.
Right. And my real question, I understand that. My real question is, appealability. Now, it doesn't look like anybody's going to peel a little dinky guest house, okay? It's just if you are.
I don't think it's a little dinky guest house. I think it's a really nice guest house.
Well, nine hundred, yes. Nobody, I don't think anybody's going to peel this project personally, okay?
Well, it's, but.
There's nobody here.
Nine hundred, John, you know, with all due respect, the max is about nine hundred. So, you know, we're, we're really, we're, we're, you know, we're pushing the limit here.
Pushing limit on what?
On the guest house. I'm just joking with you.
No. There is a, there is a finding we must make saying this is the, not the last street to the ocean. And it is.
Or, or if it is that there is adequate access nearby, and I think Skylar made a good case that that staircase to the headland is adequate for a substantial portion of Point Doom.
We've turned down a lot. There are a lot, this is.
But you say that that's the only public access, and John's very well aware of it, that is the only public access that is nearby.
Yeah, okay. Richard?
No, but it doesn't say public access, you guys. It says the last street to the beach. This is the appealability zone I'm talking about. An appealability zone is basically anything from the coast highway to the ocean that doesn't have a street in front of it.
So this is appealable to the coastal community.
In that respect, it is appealable.
Okay. Then, then we should correct this to say this is that situation. As I remember, we say it is not because it's not.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. It's just really a language thing that's in the approval. So if we can get to the place where we can get an approval and get a roll call and make that recommendation, I would really like that.
So I, I'm just suggesting that there's three things we need to do. We need to correct the plans. We approve it as submitted.
We already did that.
With the plans corrected.
That's in my motion.
And correct the square footage number and change it to not the, the, to the, not the last, the last street to the ocean, making it appealable. That's, that is my.
So my, I'm willing to do that as far as the language goes with that, but I'm only willing to do that if that was the language for the other projects that were done on Fernhill. If the other houses on Fernhill in that vicinity did not require that language, I am not comfortable with putting that language on this project.
Well, it's not whether we're comfortable. It's fact, is it or is it not?
I think, I think it depends on how you look at the angle, because right now, if I look and I'm just running parallel off of the back of this property, I'm going to hit a portion of Bison Court before I'm going to hit the ocean.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. If, if only I could put this in the record easily, which I can't, and maybe Fletcher can. But if you look on Google aerial view, you have a, there's a gap between Cliffside and Gray Fox. And there's a stream course that runs right past this down, around Bison Court and down. So it is technically between the last street and the coast, but you have a good point that how, what is the precedent of other, the couple of houses nearby here? Have they also?
It's not a precedent-setting thing. It's, it's an actual code. It says exactly that.
Well.
Okay, but.
And I don't know why we need to argue about it because it's in the LIP.
Then don't bring it up. If it's in there, why are you talking about it?
Because we say the opposite. The staff report is the opposite. That's why. That's, it's no big deal.
Richard.
It's just correcting the.
Let's hear from Richard.
If I may, staff. So the agenda report has a typographical error in it. It should say that this does lie between the first public road and the sea. The resolution you have before you this evening, if you look at the last page of the resolution, it is correct in that it states that, it is page fourteen, it states that there is a coastal commission appeal process. commission appeal process, and I know that there's some debate up here about roads and beaches and this and that, but there's the appeal permit jurisdiction maps that are part of our local coastal program, which do identify this property as appealable to the coastal commission, and you've got that in your resolution.
If that's in there, then let's make sure that it reflects that language.
It is, it is in there, it is in the resolution.
We're fine.
So it's there, it's just, okay, so, we're fine, the only thing we have to...
Only thing we have to do is approve it.
Well, I have a couple of comments.
The corrections, though, right?
I have a couple of comments, yeah, you've listed the corrections already, I think Patrick's probably got them in hand, right? Two comments, one more administrative, one more substantive. The first one, we have three sheds to remove, two of which are over 120 square feet. Do, what is the criteria for when you do or don't need a demolition permit? Is that, apparently, we don't need one here, but what is the cutoff?
I think if it's a shed, you can pick it up and move it, so.
No, you can't move it.
If it's movable, okay.
Well, no, you can't move it because it's not allowed.
I'm totally comfortable to put no requirement in here specifically to remove it.
There's no permanent foundation?
Yeah.
Okay, although they are calling it TDSF, so...
No, I think they were clarifying it, the reason why he's removing it is so that he meets all of that stuff.
So why don't we ask the planner what is required? Can you tell us, do you need a demolition permit to create new TDSF for you somewhere else?
The demolition permit findings really aren't tied to total development square footage and moving back and forth, because this is, when someone demolishes something, they lose it. So if you had a house that was, say, 1,000 square feet over the TDSF, you couldn't go and demolish 1,000 feet and then go build it somewhere else. So this is being looked at as new square footage, and really, the big issue with demolition is recoverable materials, you know, if there was a foundation ingraining that took place, we don't want to leave bare dirt, because we don't want erosion problems. If it makes the commission more easy, more easy with the project, a condition could be added that the applicant shall check with the building official to see if a demolition permit is required by the building department.
That's, that's good enough for me, that doesn't hurt anybody.
Fine with me.
And they can say you don't need it.
Let's keep moving forward.
Yeah, my next biggest and last question concern, right now, the plan in front of council about ADUs puts a maximum height, what they have in front of them, they're still discussing it next week, maximum height at 16 feet, up to 24 with a site plan review. The one objection to going higher came from Mary Ann Riggins, saying that, you know, if you, if you could just allow 18 feet as a matter of course, then you could put a second floor above the garage. And what I see here is exactly the, is that, that if it's an 18-foot garage with windows all around the top, it's basically prepped and ready to just pop in an extra floor there and/or to put in a parking lift or something else, I don't know, but it just seems like, I don't know that we have any jurisdiction to say it has to be less than 18, because they haven't formally passed the 16 limit.
Let me put something to you to put this to rest, they're at the maximum square footage, they can't add it.
I'm talking about bootleg.
Well, we can't, okay.
Right, I mean, if it's, is there, is there any basis...
You got to remember, there's nothing to stop somebody from building a garage that's that size and sticking a boat in it, or a tractor, or anything else that they want. And we must make this decision based on the codes and the laws that are passed right now, we can't make it based on some future law that may or may not pass.
Yeah, and in this case, they don't, they couldn't do it anyway.
I feel...
It's just a strange design.
Let me share something else that Dominic shared with me when I met with him, and I didn't think it was relevant at all, but now I'm going to say that, because I do think it's relevant, which is, he waited, and he waited, and he waited for the city to get an AD ordinance in place, and when the city didn't get an AD ordinance in place, he submitted his application. So if the city had, we had all had our act together in the many facets that we are and represent, and had that approved already, this would have been done under that mechanism. But because that's taken so long, it's forced people like him, and potentially others, over the years, to come and apply for it this way.
Yeah, and you're totally correct, and we don't need to consider ADUs because they don't exist, number one.
Well, whether you call it an ADU or a second unit or whatever.
I know, but he's putting in a second unit, and he's going through the proper process. The only difference between an ADU at this present time and a second unit is nothing, they're all second units.
So just to confirm with staff, or I guess with Patrick, there's no, nothing in the code that says we shouldn't allow something if it could realistically lead to a code violation? We just, we can't predict the future, and that's that.
That is accurate, correct.
You just, we just had that with Seastar with that filling of the dirt, that's the same thing you're talking about.
It's similar, it is similar, although in this case, we have a council who's made their intentions pretty clear already, but whatever.
Okay, so Skylar, is the motion to approve this with the changes in the mapping and the language?
The mapping...
My motion is to approve it.
Let's hear it from, let's hear it from Patrick.
The change, correction of square footage to make sure that it reflects what Fletcher wants, and to, we, I think we already have the language in there, we said, for saying it's the coastal road.
We have that, and then the only other change, so once again, there's, I believe, Dr. Molika, you can correct me, there's two square footage corrections that need to be made, and then the additional condition that simply requires the applicant to confirm, check, confer, whatever word you guys would like, with the building official regarding the requirement of demolition.
If it's necessary.
If necessary for a demolition permit.
And I, and if that's the motion, I seconded it, and that's fine.
All right, any further discussion?
I'm just saying it's 9:15, we're making progress.
No further discussion?
Chair Hill, if we may.
Could I just ask, as a point of clarification, I had the second as having been made by Commissioner Smith?
So I made an original motion, Dennis seconded it, there was a couple subsequent wishes that were done. I don't think that anybody that's up here takes offense whether they're seconding it or firsting it at this point in time on this item, but however you guys want it to read, if you want, that is fine, and I'll let the chair designate that.
Can I be on record as thirding it?
I think we're where we are, I don't care who votes, who seconds it, I really don't. I will second it if Dennis doesn't want to.
I just don't know why we have to, okay, the square footage is one thing, I don't know why we have to put too much in here, it's just ridiculous to do any of this, it's too easy.
We can't approve a project over TDSF, that's why.
This is part of what a planning commission does.
Yes.
Who's, who's, what are the motions?
Second it.
Okay, it's seven votes both.
We have a first and a second, roll call please.
Chair Hill, I just want to have Fletcher maybe just read the square footage into the record, so it's clear, the change.
The one that John called out, okay, yeah, the square footage change?
So yeah, I believe the page that John was referring to is, well, first of all, it's on the septic approval, and then there is...
It's on the main, the main sheet for the guest house. It says 900 square feet.
Well, this one says 891, but I think there is another page that shows the site plan, so I think that's the one you're referring to, we'll make that change. So yeah, it's going from, yeah, it was incorrectly labeled as 900, we're going to correct it to 891.
Okay.
Okay, so it's in the record, can we vote?
Yeah, roll call please.
Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second the motion. Roll call please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Peake?
Yep.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm staying, no.
All right, thank you, everybody, we cut through, what, 921? We did have one item off the table tonight, but not too bad. Thanks a lot, good night, everyone.